Larry, are you connected?
I am, I am.
Do they turn off the volume? Oops.
Uh, well, I don't have control of that. I believe Holly has control of that. All right, so, let's see. So we're, uh, I guess I'm on the meeting now, finally. Uh, audio-wise, I've had video for a while. Um, so let's get started. It's, uh, past the start time. Uh, our, uh, agenda this evening, uh, is first a call to order, and that, that I will do right now, uh, is the time is, uh, what? Let's see.
Seven oh four.
Okay, seven oh four. We've called the meeting to order. Uh, the next, uh, item is to approve the agenda. Uh, following that, we approve, uh, uh, on the agenda that we have planned is to approve the twenty-eighth October meeting minutes, followed, uh, by the Calvert County School Board presentation on the proposed site plans for Beach Elementary School. Uh, Calvert County Public Schools will be asking us to either approve their, uh, site plan, to approve with conditions, uh, to table the site plan, or deny approval. I'm sure they don't want either of the last two, but those are options for the commission. I know that, uh, some of the commissioners have, uh, uh, items that they would like to raise and discuss, so we'll bring those up during the presentation. And after, uh, after the commissioners have had, uh, a few words about the, uh, presentation, I'll open it up, uh, for the public.
Was part of the school from back in nineteen fifty-four?
I'm sorry, who was that? All right, well, let me proceed. The, uh, uh, after the Beach Elementary School presentation, we're going to have a study on entitlements in Chesapeake Beach, and then, uh, a public comment, uh, for any of our public that are listening, uh, have a chance to make their comments known, and then we'll adjourn. So can I have a motion from the commissioner, commissioners to approve the agenda for this evening? Or are there any, uh, changes the people would like to the agenda?
Uh, motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Evans.
I'll second.
We have a second.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second, uh, uh, so let's see, who's left? Uh, uh, let's see, uh, Mr. Greengold, do you approve the minutes?
I approve, yes, I approve.
The agenda, rather.
Yeah.
Uh, Commissioner Larson. Uh, Commissioner Blackwelder.
I approve.
And, uh, Commissioner Brol.
I approve.
Okay, so we have an approved agenda. Uh, have all the, have any of the commissioners not had a chance to read the draft minutes from, uh, the October twenty-eighth meeting? Hearing known. I assume everyone has. Uh, can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the October twenty-eighth meeting?
My motion to approve the minutes from the October twenty-eighth meeting.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Uh, Commissioner Blackwelder, a second. Uh, we have a motion, we have a second. Uh, does anyone object to approving the minutes? Hearing none, the, the minutes are approved unanimously. Um, the Calvert County School Board, uh, has a presentation that they're going to make on, uh, the site plan for Beach Elementary School. So, uh, I'll, let me turn it over to Chris, and you can, uh, emcee that presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm here. Uh, so, uh, for background purposes, uh, this project was set before you several months ago, um, in a concept forum, uh, as part of a, a referral from the Board of Appeals for a special exception request. And the Board of Appeals, uh, and, and you made a recommendation supporting that special exception. Uh, you also supported the variance, as I recall, um, that the applicants sought, so that the building could be taller than thirty-five feet. And both of those recommendations were transmitted to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Uh, they conducted a public hearing and approved the special exception, uh, which, you know, we kind of thought would happen, since the school has been on this site since nineteen fifty-four, fifty-five. Um, and the, um, the Board of Appeals also approved the variance to allow a building that was taller than the maximum allowed, uh, which was set at thirty-five feet. Now that the project comes back before you in a formal capacity, uh, not, not in the informal way, um, that was associated with the concept plan, but in a formal way that places you in a decision-making role. Uh, a preliminary site plan is what is being presented to you tonight. Um, and when I say preliminary, I, I don't mean to suggest that your approval is only preliminary or conceptual. Your approval, approval is, uh, valid, and it establishes, uh, the necessary step to, uh, achieve a permit ultimately for this project. Um, we say it's preliminary because there are always final engineering considerations and, uh, agency approvals. Um, I's have to be dotted and T's crossed. Um, and you may also have conditions, uh, and concerns that the applicants didn't anticipate, and you might share them with them, and they, they may say, "Oh, okay, we can address those concerns." So those concerns and those approvals will ultimately be resolved, as is typical, um, and then a final word will be stamped on the plan, and it will be brought to, uh, typically it's brought to the chairman for signature, uh, certifying that the changes have been made. Um, and what we do as staff at planning and engineering is, uh, document for the chairman that each of the changes or requirements, uh, have been addressed. And then final approval is given. And once final approval is given to a site plan, the applicants obtain a zoning permit, which entitles them to move forward and complete the project. Um, of course, before they actually complete the project, they need to obtain a building permit from Calvert County. Um, and that could be a lengthy process that involves a lot of technical reviews. Um, but by that point, the project is approved, and it's, it's just a matter of meeting any of the technical code standards, like fire safety and, and, uh, the proper egress and access into a building and other life safety codes. So, um, you're, you're at an important juncture this evening, and this project has come a long way. Um, and that's, that's the background. Um, I prepared a staff report that was, uh, dated, well, I guess, I see back in July. I, maybe that's not the right date, actually, but it seems like it's been a while. But the staff report, uh, essentially recommended, uh, approval of the plan, and it raised a number of issues. Um, it, it just, it discussed the fact that a number of changes had been made to the concept plan, uh, and the applicants have been provided a copy of this, um, memo. So they know that these are concerns that they should bring to your attention, because we want to know what changes have been made to the concept. But they're really, uh, what I realized were about four or five changes. One, the, the service and loading area has been reconfigured. That's the loading area in the, in the rear of the building. Uh, the community entrance plaza that faces out onto Old Bayside Road near the intersection has been reconfigured somewhat. Um, the back recreational field has been formalized. It really looks like a recreational field now. Um, so some thought went into refining those concepts. Uh, a mid-block crosswalk over Maryland two sixty-one, um, that has been removed. And you might remember there was a, a concept of showing how people could cross, uh, pretty much in the area where the tennis courts were, in that vicinity, to the other side of two sixty-one. Um, that raises real concerns. We want to make sure there's good sidewalks and adequate traffic control before we introduce crosswalk onto a state highway. Um, so that was, that was removed. Doesn't mean that can ever be replaced or reintroduced, but for the time being, um, I think the applicants are, are spot-on in removing that. Um, there are minor changes and refinements to the concept, too, uh, that you may have noticed. These seem to be very small things, like landscaping, and the details are there, trees and the critical area mitigation, all of it's in the plan now, the tr- the, the trail and, and the like. The applicant has also addressed a number of concerns that I had, uh, but they may not be reflected yet on the plans they're presenting tonight. Uh, and so, first of all, there's no bike parking, and our zoning ordinance does require that every project that comes before you for site plan approval show parking for bicycles. Uh, and that's part of the town's efforts to promote bicycling, but it's also a state law. It's directly from the state of Maryland that, um, a municipality must have requirements for providing bicycle parking in developments. Um, at the time that I wrote the memo, there was no lighting plan, and, uh, there is a requirement in our site plan regulations for submitting a lighting plan. Um, I have since been, uh, provided a, a, a lighting plan that shows the locations of the light fixtures throughout the project, uh, and a, kind of a cross-section of a, a light pole. But what I am most concerned about is the illumination plan, the, the degree to which light is intense, or it might trespass off the site and into the street, or onto the sidewalk, or, or heaven forbid, onto adjoining property. So that's always a matter of concern for us. And, um, as of, I'd say, five weeks ago, four weeks ago, the applicant said that, uh, he would probably have that ready for final site plan review. That, of course, requires a great deal of, um, uh, study to, to compile the illumination plan. I noted that if there's a sign that was going to be provided, you know, Beach Elementary School, um, you know, whatever, up, up on the highway or on Ba- Old Bayside Road, it would need to be, uh, we'd be to see what it looks like and that is properly located. Um, and I also noted that on the site plan itself, the technical drawings, there's no notation, as far as I could tell at, at the time, that referred to the, um, Fishing Creek Railway Trail. And, um, the applicant's engineer and I since talked, uh, about this quite extensively, and I was really pleased to see the, how creative they are in thinking about where to place this. And, um, I'll leave it to them to discuss that this evening, but I, I feel much more confident about, um, the possibility of this school being connected to the town's trail system now than I did, you know, several months ago. Mr. Chairman, that kind of concludes my overview of the project. Um, and as the applicant goes through, if there are any technical questions that I can help out with, feel free to ask.
Where to place this? And, uh, I'll leave it to them to discuss that this evening, but I...
I'm hearing some...
Yes.
Okay. Let that, that, I'm finished.
Thank you, Chris. Um, and I'll just kind of go back and review. Uh, as Chris indicated, we, we were with you some time ago, uh, in the original, um, when we shared our original concept, and the concepts come about. Uh, I'm pleased that, uh, the overall idea, general approach to the project is still consistent with that original concept, which you saw and approved back at that time. Um, so thank you again for having us back. Uh, I am Ron Ilkovich. I'm an architect, and I'm principal of SEI Architects. Uh, we have with us some of our team, and I see some of our stakeholder group is also joined, uh, to observe today. Um, but we are led by Suchita Warner. She is Director of School Construction for Calvert County Public Schools. Also have with us tonight Rochelle Cusimano, who is SEI's project manager and is leading all the processes and procedures that, that Chris identified to, to make this project a reality, as well as Co- Joe Kajewski, who is a civil engineer and principal of Collins and Holle Associates Civil Engineers, uh, located in Calvert County. So, uh, we have a really strong team to, to, to bring the project to fruition, and of course, answer any questions you may have tonight, um, during the presentation. We are, of course, here seeking a site plan approval or a conditional site plan approval, uh, based on some of the conditions and discussion that Chris had brought up with things that we're still working through. Uh, on the screen, we have kind of a little site analysis. I'll start on the top right, and just talk about how great a site and location this project is. Uh, from our project site, we're less than a quarter mile, right around a quarter mile or five minutes to the waterfront, uh, whether it be on the bayside or through one of those trails Chris was talking about down towards Fishing Creek. Likewise, we're within a half-mile walk or ten minutes to cross the bridge to get to real downtown Chesapeake Beach. So the opportunities and, and the type of location, uh, both ecologically as well as connection and connectivity to the town are, are really great opportunities that this project has to take advantage of. Uh, likewise, there's a, there's not only, not so much, not as much of an existing, but a, an idea coming forth, uh, in the twenty forty vision of an interconnected town. And we see the school as a real opportunity to be a hub and a connection point of that ultimate plan, whether it be pedestrian, bikers, and, and the, uh, vehicular circulation pattern as well, which we, we hope to improve and, and, uh, be a part of. Moving to the left is an analysis of the existing site itself. And while it is a seventeen-acre site, it is really limited in the buildable area. Uh, it's limited by a number of wetlands, topographies, and environmental buffers on the, on the northwest side and on the north. And to the east edge of the site is the existing building. Our project, of course, will be built while the existing building is remaining occupied. So the resulting buildable area really left us with this, uh, shoe-shaped piece of property in the back, kind of at the, at the tightest piece of the property, uh, which, which led us to some constraints that we had to deal with, which, uh, I like to think we turned into opportunities. Um, what we started with was a stakeholder advisory group, and we met with the stakeholders and really talked about what we want the school to, to do. What is the pedagogy of the school? How does the school relate to this great natural resource around it? How does the school want to relate to the town? And, uh, we developed this diagram that you see on the top left, that we call a Part T diagram, which really just identifies what is the big idea of the site. And what really came of it was by pushing the building towards the west of the site, we could set a zone for the school building, which then allowed us to create a more park-like setting out front. So instead of presenting what you see all too often, which is a parking lot and a bus loop in front and a school behind it, which looks more like a, a shopping center, we really wanted to, to go with an idea where we're going to have like a public green and a parkland, and really illuminate some of the natural resource that, that exists in the town of Chesapeake Beach. And then by pushing the building back on the site, we can then relate some of the site program, like the gym and the cafeteria, to the service and the play areas, the front of the building, and, and create kind of a formal aspect to the front of the building, and then create a much safer and, uh, more accessible connection for the public to the school, whether that be by school bus, by, uh, pedestrian pathway, or by parent pickup and drop-off. Uh, as Chris mentioned, we were here a number of months ago and followed to the Board of Appeals to request three things. A special exception for the continued use of this site as a public school, uh, within the, the residential M D zoning district; a variance to exceed the maximum height of thirty-five feet, which is really, if you think about it, ideal for housing, but not so much for school; and a variance for disturbance to exceed some of the slope buffers. And some of those, uh, were to correct some erosion that had occurred on the site over time. Uh, and, and all of those, I'm really happy to see, have since been approved, uh, here and at the Board of Zoning Appeals. Um, so we've continued to work with that, and that, uh, that constraint of that tight piece of the site really led us to the idea of a three-story elementary school. Uh, going vertical rather than horizontal is, is an obvious step when taking into consideration how limited the, the buildable site area is. But in this case, it really offered us some opportunities as well. One was to really draw from the, the aesthetic of a lighthouse idea. And this being a, a town that's on the water, and the idea of a lighthouse was something very romantic to us and to the entire stakeholder advisory group. The other opportunity that availed itself is that by putting the building on this higher piece of property and building it a little bit more vertically, we had this great opportunity to have views. Views down to the waterfront, views, uh, down towards Fishing Creek and over the, into the trees. Um, something that really helps the, the, the natural resources be seen by all the students and all the children during the school day, and can be part of the learning environment that we're trying to develop. So it was a, it was something that we were really excited to, to really work with the stakeholder group to, to continue to refine. Um, three-story school, however, in a residential district is something that is a challenge. Uh, we want to always make sure that the building in the context of the community is appropriate. So we did a number of studies to evaluate this, and one of the things that we found was that by setting the building at the ground elevation, as Old Bayside Road rises, we can start to mitigate the scale of the building. We can also add a series of green buffers and zones, uh, adjacent to the street. And what you can see in this diagram is as Old Bayside Road continues to rise, our site doesn't quite keep up topographically, so the building sits a little bit lower. Nothing, of course, can compare to the scale of the water tower, uh, behind us. Also dramatic in this image is re-level. And what happens, you can see here on the left image on Old Bayside Road, as Old Bayside Road rises and the building stays flat, it really starts to, to actually be in line with the roof lines of the street across, of the houses across the street. And it's more of a perspectival effect from the pedestrian level. So this roof edge is really around the same height as our roof edge. Um, likewise, from Bayside Road, we can see the, the early childcare center, the, uh, daycare center is uphill from us. So, so likewise, by setting the building very far back on the site, that roof line, our roof line, is no higher than that roof line from the pedestrian level. But I think what the most important thing of an image like this is, is that we're really pushing and trying to achieve that park-like setting on Bayside Road, and not the image of a school behind a parking lot. Uh, as we continue to get towards the school, we're looking to create environments that are both learning environments as well as public stopping points along the way. Uh, we developed a, a series of diagrams that are, are about site circulation, and to have primary, secondary, tertiary, and now even a fourth level of pedestrian pathways, as well as bus loop and parent drop-off. And I'll talk in a moment about how those were developed in a way to be both usable by the school and the public, but also designed for safety and security of the school as well. Uh, and, and taking advantage of the natural resource of the trailheads was something that, that, Chris, we're really glad you brought to, to our attention, but really is something that we want to take advantage of as a school and as a, as a pedagogy for, for the students that will be here. So identifying and starting to design some of these outdoor environments to make those connections is really important to us also. Um, also important is preserving and enhancing the, of the small-town charm. Uh, we did a lot of looking around and photography of local buildings, local architecture, local materials, to really start to draw some of that nautical approach, some of the materiality that occurs, uh, the vertical components, the brick components, um, to really bring those motifs back into our building as well, and have this kind of flowing component that really relates to the architecture around us, as well as the natural color palette, uh, that, that exists around school. Um, so creating a facade that is a twenty-first-century school, um, to really take this project into the next generation and, and offer that kind of next-generation learning opportunity. A front entrance that's, uh, protected, but it's, it's obvious from where the students get dropped off or where the bus drops students off to come to that front door. An administration suite that sits proud on the front of the building, yeah, giving it the opportunity to surveil the entire site and, and offer that safety and security element of any visitors coming to the project. And of course, this high piece that allows us now to have those views out to the distance and towards the water. Um, which brings us back to the final site as we're continuing to develop it. And, and I'll just walk us through and explain how the site works. Uh, of course, we're, we're staying true to the original ideal of creating the community green in the front of the building. That community green will, will retain the existing tennis courts and actually add a playfield, which can be a community amenity, um, even during off-hours. Uh, moving back towards the site, the transit zone really comes behind that parkland. So from Bayside Road, the image still will be the green space out in front of the building. And then the building itself will relate to outdoor learning environments, such as a reading garden adjacent to media center, an arts plaza where students can, where that art program can really leak out to the outside, and you can do messy projects and outdoor projects, um, all of which occur along the pedestrian pathway. So if there's, let's say, a sculpture garden that the art class is doing, and they're putting that out there, pedestrians walking through the site will have an opportunity to experience that. And then as we get towards the back of the site, our gym and cafeteria will now relate to the service area, and then playgrounds and playfields that relate to the school program itself, moving on to the back. So the idea of the public green, the transit zone, the school zone, and the school green zone is really, has really played itself through as the design has continued to evolve. The pedestrian pathway is designed to connect to the ultimate safe access to the school's program, um, which will be a series of sidewalks that connect the town, uh, throughout with the school and other amenities to the town, and start to offer a more pedestrian-friendly access to the school site in the future. Uh, we take this into consideration in all three corners, pedestrian corners of our site. On the northeast, we have a sidewalk which will connect along Old Bayside Road. And what I want to point out is most important to us as school designers is the safety of the pedestrian once they access the site. So if you're a student and you're walking to school and you're coming from this northeast corner, you will see that you can take this paved pedestrian pathway all the way to the front door without ever crossing traffic. Likewise, when you cross the crosswalk on the southeast corner, you, you land at this plaza, and again, you will be able to walk all the way to the front door without ever crossing the bus loop or a parent drop-off or any traffic. So the safety of the student, once they've accessed the site, uh, as a pedestrian, is of critical importance in a scenario like this. Um, likewise, on the southwest corner, uh, sidewalk will catch you and bring you onto our sidewalk system, and again, never cross. Uh, thinking about safety again, right now, there's a parking lot that exists here, and a lot of the parent pickup and drop-off occurs in this parking lot. Uh, folks double-park or get stuck out on Old Bayside Road, um, as they're trying to get in and make this turn in. For that reason, a very long neck to the parent drop-off loop is great, because if any stacking occurs, it occurs on-site. Those of you, all of you, I guess, know the site. There's a, there's kind of the crest of the hill right about this point here. Uh, if you're coming over a little too fast and someone's not quite made this turn, uh, that's a way of getting cars out of that dangerous situation, uh, into our site. The parent loop drops off directly on the sidewalk. That means no parent drops off in a parking lot or has to walk their kid to the front door. Uh, that, that student never has to cross any paving to get to the front door. And likewise, on the bus loop, will drop students right off onto the sidewalk, and they can go into the front door as well. And in the front of the building, we've continued to evolve the roof line to create a colonnade and a covered kind of patio front area here, uh, which, which will, will be a, a, uh, weather shade as you get to the building itself. Um, moving back, Chris mentioned that we've continued to refine the service area in order to get the right backup into the bus, into that service drive. We've, we've cranked the loading dock and created a ramp system that can bring materials down without, uh, traversing stairways to the entry into the, the service area of the cafeteria and such. And likewise, have some dumpster pads where we can create some doors to, to shield those activities as well. So this was really the result of a couple of things. Uh, the challenge of topography, as I mentioned, with Old Bayside Road rising to... The challenge of topography, as I mentioned, with Old Bayside Road rising topography, we had to deal with the hill to get down to the service area. And likewise, just the turning radii of the trucks and vehicles that will be accessing that cafeteria in the back. We've continued to develop this plaza, which could be something really nice outside the cafeteria, which could, and the gym, which could provide an evening entrance for use of the gym in the evening, use of that cafeteria with its folding wall, which can be opened up into almost an auditorium-type space. And the music room, this could also be kind of an outdoor music environment that exists as we come down here. And we overcame some challenges with topography here as well, with the sidewalks creating an accessible route and a stair that brings us down to that plaza, dealing with the change in topography up to Old Bayside Road. The, so the pedestrian pathway, which I kind of walked through, starts with a very formal straight line that runs right through our building, to be quite honest, that makes the front door a very obvious component. The kind of curvilinear park-like pathway system that walks you through the park like setting out in the front into the north of the building. And Chris mentioned the connection to the trailheads, which Joe Kudjasky, our civil engineer, and Chris have been working together on to create location like this one, where we can have kind of a connection point. And I think, Chris, this was your recommendation, but we really like it, where you come, spring off that point and follow the line of the topography, which means that you're not walking downhill into the woods so much as walking along the hill and dropping down at a much more gradual pace. So I think this was a really great suggestion, so we thank you for that, of bringing that trailhead to this point. We also think this might be an ideal location for that bike rack. If you're coming off-site, you can lock your bike up here and walk down into that trail. Likewise, from this location, you can have very easy access from a public standpoint to the playfields in that part and the tennis courts in the park-like setting out front or continue down the pathway to the school. The other trailhead would occur at this location. And we've kind of indicated this to take you back around the playfields and down into those wooded areas. I think this is kind of a nice spot too, because you'll be able to see into the woods to the right and into that stormwater management component, which will be planted and will be hopefully a nice environment as well. Kind of walking through a natural environment rather than sidewalk at that point. We are conceiving of a building sign component and we're thinking about that in a very prominent location here along this main entry plaza where pedestrians might access the site. Towards the back of the site, the gym and the cafeteria, I talked a little bit about the service entry for the cafeteria. We'll do some significant screening around and behind that. But behind that will be the playgrounds and the playfield that serve the school for recess time. And they're directly adjacent to cafeteria to go in and out from lunch to recess, as well as the gymnasium, to bring some of those physical education components straight out onto the playfield and use those functions together as well. So that's really how our site has just continued to evolve. Basically, continuing with the general idea of that original diagram and just refinements to make it realistic and to ultimately bring it to fruition. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions and answer any concerns. Again, we have with us Joe Kudjasky for any of the technical civil engineering questions, as well as Rochelle, who can answer any more of the detailed architectural questions that we have. Thank you for your time and a great opportunity to do a great project.
Okay, let's, let me first ask Commissioner Larson on the line. I don't see him on the attendees. I know he was, he might not make it this evening. All right. Next, what I'd like to do, I think, is walk around to each of the commissioners. I know they have some individual questions and I'll do it in this order. First, Mr. Evans. Second, Ms. Beral. Third, Ms. Greengold, and follow-up with the Vice Chairman of the Commission, Ms. Blackwelder. So, Mr. Evans, if you have some questions, also, if there are conditions that any of the commissioners wish to add, then please bring those up so we can have Chris take note of them and include them in the whatever decisions we make this evening. So, Mr. Evans, over to you.
Okay, I did have some questions, but I think they're pretty much all addressed by Chris in the beginning about the bike parking and the lighting plan and the trail. It sounds like, I think, pretty much all the questions I did have were answered by the presentation. I see the trailhead. So, so we're thinking that these two trailheads are gonna intersect at some point? Or are they just two different trailheads that go to two different spots on the trail?
They are two different trail. This is intended to go into the, connect to a potential ultimate trail in, on the northwest corner of the site and this one in this location, kind of weaving down to the water. What they do beyond that, we're not quite sure. That's a future endeavor.
Right. Okay, and the lighting plan, they said that'll come at a later time?
Right. And a preliminary lighting plan has since been developed and provided. What will come later is a photometric study, which will demonstrate that the lighting selected and the lighting power selected don't spill off out onto neighboring properties. So there's a, there's a technical photometric study that will follow in our ultimate solution.
And as the new school is being built and the kids are in the old school, the staging area will be where the new school is, pretty much?
We're anticipating the staging area will actually be back in this playfield. Because that's a spot that will remain till the end of the project. And then the restoration of that area into the playfield will, would be one of the last pieces of our construction process. That is still under, the construction manager will ultimately define those areas, but that's our strategy at the moment.
Okay, and the last question I had was, I know you were talking about qualifying for, what was it, the silver energy, energy efficiency? Did you guys achieve that? And are there any plans of putting solar panels or anything like that?
So, two questions. One is the lead silver standard. So that will actually be granted at the end of the project, but we track it throughout and we're designing with that in, as our, one of our primary goals, to be quite honest. So the standard in the LEED version four criteria for LEED silver is fifty points. I can tell you that we are currently tracking at fifty-four yeses with an additional thirteen maybes on our scorecard. So we are, we're tracking quite well above that standard already. The project right now does not anticipate solar panels at its onset. However, we have built the build, design, we are designing the building to be solar-ready, to accept those solar panels. And that has a number of components to it. One is the connection to our electrical system for the building. And the second is actually to bolster the structural system of the roof to accommodate the weight of those panels in the future, all of which is being built in. So it is, it is literally plug-in ready for when those solar panels become economically feasible for the project. Our project, though, doesn't need them to make that LEED silver requirement. In fact, with the white roof that we're doing, we're trying to achieve a reflectivity to reduce the heat load that we gain from the sun. So a black roof will get really hot, whereas a white roof will reflect the heat and reduce our energy costs for air conditioning. So that's one of the measures we're taking towards our goal. But we are tracking well on that sustainability goal.
Hey, that sounds great. Thanks. That's all I have.
Okay, Commissioner Beral, do you have any questions, concerns?
Yes, I do. I noticed, Rand, you had talked about when you were showing us the walking trail. And I like how it weaves around the, you know, the back of the school, the back of the property. But currently, there is a requirement from the Board of Education that students cannot walk to the school. So did you just mean recreational for after-hours activities or by the community?
So I can't talk to the school policy, maybe Suchita can answer that. But I can tell you that every school is a community space, it's a community place. And when, when you guys talk about your 2040 vision and talk about the pedestrian-friendly town that you're going to be developing, we see this as part of that. So when you have a park as a node or a playfield or a playground, having that as something that's accessible to a pedestrian, whether it's me taking my kids out on Saturday morning to go to the park and play on the playground, that community accessibility is important as a part of the function of the school. And for that reason, I think it was really important to include those walk paths through the school. Ultimately, when a safe access to the school program exists, if pedestrians are coming to school on foot, I think having that safe access to the front door is also really important. And it should be a responsibility of ours as designers of schools that we can provide a safe access to the front door once you've entered our school site.
So I can speak to the students getting busing a hundred percent. And you are absolutely correct. Calver County Public Schools does provide busing to a hundred percent of our students. However, the connectivity with the sidewalks throughout the site provides circulation also to be able to use the various amenities on the school grounds because hopefully, students aren't just going to the school and then spending the day in the building. They'll certainly utilize portions of the site, whether it comes to recess, accessing the playgrounds, utilizing some of the other areas on the site, whether it be, you know, potentially looking at the observation deck or, you know, some of the other locations on the site. So it just provides for good circulation and access so that really a hundred percent of the site is activated by the, you know, for learning for the students.
Um, thank you. My other question was, are there only two sites for bike parking that you showed, Rand? One behind the playfield, the playfield, and then the other over by the gym? And in, what's the capacity of those, the bike parking?
Actually, right now, we're only showing this area right here. And like you mentioned, Calver County has this hundred percent bus-to-school policy. Likewise, they're not encouraging bike access to the schools for students. So it's kind of a, two sides of a coin for the school's, the school's program about the bike lockup location. So right now, we've kind of identified a location here that is more of a public access bike lockup. So if you're coming to play on a playfield or coming to the tennis court or going down the trail, you have an opportunity to lock your bike up in a public location, but not necessarily in a location at the school building itself where you would be encouraging students to ride their bikes to school. And I can't recall the capacity, but we were looking at a bike, a single bike rack. So maybe eight to ten bicycles at that location.
Good evening. This is Mike Schisler. Mr. Beral, I just want to add to your, about your question. Looking at the, you know the way our school is laid out now, it would not be safe for kids to be walking to school or to be biking to school. And that's why we say you're either on the bus or your parents are driving you to and from school. And, but when you look at this overall layout, you can see there's a lot of features that are gonna be positive towards walking and changing the safe access to the campus. So I would, I would think we're gonna be revisiting, you know, where the bike racks would be, but also the concept of walking to school and riding to school. It just doesn't work right now. I mean, technically, we're in compliance because we do have a bike rack right outside our current cafeteria, but it only would house three or four bikes. So that's, that's gonna be an item for discussion as this school gets developed and goes online.
I will say, Ms. Beral, that, you know, the eight to ten spots that we show in terms of the bike rack, it really is more from the standpoint of a public amenity. So that's why, like Ron said, it's located where it is. So that's where we see it. And frankly, the other part of this is, is that we don't have room for really housing anymore bikes on-site. So we're trying to kind of, you know, meet the intent of what the town is looking at, but then at the same time, also trying to make sure that we can fit all of the required features of a very, very constrained-sized site.
Well, I certainly, you know, I appreciate Dr. Schisler commenting because I think, I mean, I've always, we live right across the street from Beach Elementary and, you know, it would seem always so easy just to have your children walk to school, you know, get them awake and, and ready for the day. But I certainly understand the, the safety issue and the need for a hundred percent of busing. But that, I like the fact that that might be revisited because this looks like just such a, you know, a walking pedestrian, you know, bike-friendly environment. And it would be, it would be nice if that could be safely revisited and possibly changed. And my last question just relates to, there was a mention previously of the, of the connection of the school to Fishing Creek Trail. And I just wondered if, if there's been any more consideration for that.
Yes, those are the trailheads that Joe, our civil engineer, has been working with Chris to accomplish, one of which occurs in this location to get down to Fishing Creek Trail. And the other that occurs at this location, so you could drop your bike, lock your bike up and walk down that trail. And again, I know I'm reiterating, but I really like the way that it runs along parallel with the topography. So you don't feel like you're dropping down into the ravine, you more have a gradual walk down into the wood line.
Very good. Thank you.
Of course.
Okay, Commissioner Greengold.
Thank you, Chairman Brown. The first question I have is on the interior of the space. Suchita, you can probably answer the question. Do you have a stage in the cafeteria area that you could convert that entire gym and cafeteria area to some type of a theater-type venue for the community?
We're actually very excited to say that we have, the architectural team, the design team has done an amazing job. And Ron can probably just kind of through the outline sort of show at that angled location how the stage really provides so much of a vantage point. But absolutely, we've got a, an operable partition which would be able to divide up the cafeteria and gym for dual use. But then if there is a larger function, we certainly have the ability to be able to open that up and really provide, I'm not sure how much seating we were talking about, but it was a pretty considerable amount.
It was.
Can't remember.
Just bring up a quick graphic. So the idea is that there is a cafeteria and the shape of the building that you see on the site, that angle didn't, didn't come because the architect was having too much fun. Well, maybe we were a little bit. But it really was something where we wanted to create a situation where the stage would not just be a stage in a kitchen. It's a stage in a space that is really angled with battered walls to really feel like an auditorium. And with the location of the folding partition, we can arrange this in a number of ways. So the gymnasium, for example, can be used simultaneously to the cafeteria with folding partition closed. Likewise, a gymnasium could be in use with a folding partition closed and still create a stage-like amphitheater-type setting in that cafeteria floor plate. And then in its ultimate, complete, open environment, you can see how effectively this angle really gets us a real auditorium-type setting that can be used both for school functions and public functions after school use. So we are really excited about the development. So we are really excited about the the development of that um component as both a school function as well as a public function. And that's really what generated this this angled component on the facade of our building.
So does that, that's including a raised, it's a raised stage?
It is. It is a raised, and I'm gonna use my air quotes, I'm gonna call it a platform because the term stage starts to to trigger a lot of code compliance issues. But it is a raised platform, yes. And you can see that it's fully accessible with an ADA ramp uh and and even kind of step platform out front where the students could stand and sing or have a lot of different types of activities in the front of that area.
Fantastic. Perfect. That's great. Um on the, how many elevators do you have? Uh I for that middle section, that is obviously the three-story section, do you have two elevators, one elevator?
We will have one elevator that accesses all levels. Uh and on the, as we, as the building rises across the site, we have a series of ramps that bring you up in it in a um universally accessible way. Uh and we've developed those ramps in ways where they're also part of the learning environments. And they become step seating areas or little amphitheaters for the students to gather in within the building. So i- i- our idea is not that, hey, if if you're using an ADA ramp, you go over there and you use if if you're a able-bodied student, you go over here. It's really to integrate those functions into one. Um take advantage of those.
So the ramps, so the ramps go all the way up to the third story then?
No, 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 no. The, sorry, uh the ground level uh actually steps up as topography rises in the building in three, three levels. Uh so as you rise in the building, uh bear with me a second. I'll I'll bring up a graphic that can probably help answer this question.
I like your screen. Look at that.
Thank you. I took that shot.
There for dinner.
Oh, I would love to. That's a food there's pretty good. Uh that's Venice.
I know.
So as you enter, uh because we're we're chasing topography as it rises across the site, um there's three floor plates on the first, on the ground plane of the building. So you can see here that there will be a ramp that ramps around this space and that space becomes really a gathering space for the kids and a step amphitheater seating type area. So as students leak out of the of the media center or as students queue up before they're released to go to the bus or to their parents, there's this really great gathering space that takes advantage of that change in topography to really be a a high and really special kind of space. As we get back towards the building, we then have an additional ramp that brings us up to the gym and cafeteria zone. This center three-story component will have a single elevator that traverses all three of these stories. At the end of the day, all all spaces are universally accessible for ADA use and and any other. You don't have to be an ADA user to need special help sometimes. So if students on crutches one day or what have you, um the access will be there for everyone. So our main, our main building, the center building, the instructional wing, has one elevator that serves it. Uh and then on the ground level, we have a series of ramps that takes you up in those three plateaus through the site. So I I think I went way roundabout to answer your question, but.
I was just concerned about ADA access access for the other two floors and indeed if there's an elevator issue or whatnot. Um, okay, the other questions I have, um going back to the um the parking, the parking lots, how many, do we have enough parking spaces for the amount of employees? Plus possibly all the assistants and all the uh teacher, um, you know, parent helpers, parent helpers, whatever. Do we have enough? How many total parking spaces do we have on site?
Joe, would you have that statistic?
I do. So um we have, we're providing 90 uh proposed parking spaces. Um the zoning ordinance requires three per uh teaching station. So we have 30 teaching stations. And really because of the lead requirements, um in order to meet certain uh credit criteria, you're limited to the the maximum allowed by logging local zoning ordinance. So we're really um we're on that maximum number and really because of the the lead silver criteria, can't provide any additional over and above that requirement. All that being said, I think uh we believe it is sufficient um to satisfy the school's needs. And certainly you have um the bus loop available for overflow. Um, you know, believe I have elementary school age students and the uh, you know, band performances and whatnot drive the parking way up, but we do have the the bus loop as an overflow option on those special occasions.
So how many employees would you have at any one time in that facility?
Right, right now, we're at about uh 60 total with teachers and support staff.
Okay, so we're just fairly making the the parking needs, in my opinion. Um let's go back to the, now, the um, if you see the little parking area right there by the tennis courts, um, yeah, that one right there. The concern I have with that parking, I mean, I, that's where I'm gonna be parking it because I play tennis. Now, uh the problem I'm having is that there's no direct pathway from that parking space to the tennis courts. So in other words, you gotta walk back out the street, go down the sidewalk and then kind of go all the way down to that um that uh uh and and, yeah, you've got to go all the way down there. In my opinion, okay, and the other problem with that one path in is that then you have to walk onto the one court and then disturb that tennis group while you're trying to get to the access the other court. So I would recommend that we put a second pathway from over by that parking lot and bring it over to the tennis court. So you have two pathways into the tennis courts because otherwise you'll be disturbing the one the one court while you're trying to access the other court. And also, you've got just such a a circuitous way to get to that tennis court. So is there any way that we can put in a pathway, a cement uh walkway from that little parking area to the tennis court?
Yeah, let us, let us take a look at that. Um I wanna, we wanna look at it from a to- topography standpoint. You can see all these little white lines are representing a hill.
Right.
Um so.
But you understand what I'm saying, right? You kinda need another um, uh that is where we're gonna park to play tennis, isn't that in that particular lot right there?
What I don't remember, is there a second access into the tennis court right now? I thought it was.
There is one over there and then there's one where the current path is. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, it does show clearly on there, but we're maintaining both of those uh access points.
Exactly, exactly.
Uh oh, did I lose you guys?
No. Dr. Schissler, I think you're muted.
Okay.
Okay, there's actually currently three entrances to the tennis courts, all right? Two are on the west side, one on the, one on the east side.
So there's one up in this location here?
Well, and kind of in the midpoint.
In the middle, in the middle, in the middle.
Steps. And there's one um between the two where there's a, there's a sidewalk that takes you back to the current parking lot.
Okay.
And again, tennis access is only gonna be in the evenings and it's only gonna be on the weekends. So um
And all day summer and then summertime.
There'll be plenty of opportunities for, there'll be no buses in this area where the where the buses are. There'll, and there'll be um plenty of opportunities for people to park and walk down the steps and go to the courts.
So you're.
That's a good point. That's a good point.
That's a good point. Regardless, every comment that we take, we always take under advisement. So let us look at that. Um, we don't want to rework the the fence around the tennis courts as I don't believe.
Right. And and you know, you know what's gonna happen. They're gonna park there because that's the natural parking spot to to park at. And then they're gonna walk and and wear down a path anyway, probably. So you might as well go ahead and put a pathway in there that would access that particular parking.
Like a pedestrian connection.
Yeah, pedestrian access from that little parking stretch because that's where most people are gonna see to park. Um, okay, so now let's go back over to the service area. Um, is that a slope down into that service area or is that uh the same level as base, Old Bayside Road?
It's a slope down significantly.
So if I'm at Old Bayside Road, am I gonna look at that tra- that dumpster area or what am I, am I gonna just see the top of it or what am I gonna see?
You'll, exactly. You'll see over it and we're planning to do some screening trees uh in this location here to screen that area as well.
All right. Um, because my concern is, you probably would know, is that I don't wanna have to look at the dumpsters as you're going up Old Bayside Road. Um, okay, now the next question is, and I'm jumping around here, there's just a lot of different things happening here. Um, I know you, but you don't, do you have a landscape architect on a, on the panel here tonight? Or is there somebody that can talk to me about trees and uh shrubs? Or who can, is there somebody that I can address?
She's not on the panel, but we can give it a shout, give it a shout. We have a landscape architect on the team.
Okay, the one, now I wasn't seeing very tall trees on the plans. Um, when you have that three-story uh section in the middle there, I wanna see, you know, 20-foot tall trees or, you know, as tall a tree as you can get to try and buffer the look of that to the neighbors on Old Bayside Road. Uh what are the trees that you have planted over there and what are the, what are the heights of those trees?
I got you. What are you doing? What are you doing?
So I I'm not sure, but I think her plan is that these trees across the front here would be more ornamental street-type trees um in the green buffer zone across the front of the building here.
Okay, I would think you would want them my evergreens and the tallest evergreens you can get because that's where you get your maximum sunlight. You've got your south facing that you might want to not have so intense coming in there uh at certain times. But I, you know, just to screen from Old Bayside, I would think you'd wanna have some uh evergreens or some some height on your plants. Um uh the other concern I have is over now, again, this is a little selfish of me, but over by the tennis courts, um, there are no trees on the north, I'm sorry, on the east side of the tennis courts. And at about four o'clock in the afternoon, the sun comes down on the uh, I'm sorry, the west side, the west side of the tennis courts, the sun comes down and you basically can't use those tennis courts because the sun. So right in there is where you need some, you know, some evergreen trees, right in there. Do you see what I'm saying on the east side of that tennis court where those, is there a possibility of putting any uh trees in there?
Uh I'm gonna take a note of it and talk to, talk to the uh, to our landscape engineer about it. Uh landscape architect about it.
Of course, that is uh, I mean, I'm not the only one who.
So with with uh, with the sunlight on it, um it doesn't necessarily have to be an evergreen in that location because that's for a winter screening. Whereas uh a deciduous tree would offer uh sun shading in the summer months as well. What months that you will actually be playing tennis, I suppose. We do wanna pronounce that that we do have a school on the site. Uh I understand.
Yes, can I go there too, please? All right. Again, this is a school project and I think I've said before to the uh planning commission, this tennis court area is something that's uh under the um control of Parks and Rec. So if you have issues about uh landscaping around that and the town, the town provided landscaping along Bayside Road and uh the school did the, did the trees in the current parking lot. But that's a Parks and Rec facility. So you're gonna need to talk to them about changes. And again, our primary function here is for a school, not to provide, you know, a tennis plaza. That's, we're trying to keep that.
I I appreciate that. I, I appreciate that. But I thought you were doing the landscaping around there. Am I not correct about the landscaping? I mean, I thought if you're gonna put some.
We are, we are. Um, I mean, I don't see, a couple of trees would hurt there, but. Well, I I think uh um one thing if I could say is um, we're trying to be very deliberate with the landscaping, landscaping and um in terms of stormwater management, there's quite a bit of requirements as far as plantings, et cetera. And we do have to be really cognizant of our budget. We do have a budget to meet. So while we certainly wanna be able to provide um the right type of landscaping, we also have to be pretty cognizant of the budget. So um I just wanna put that out there that that's, that's an important consideration, the most important consideration. So um, you know, certainly, these are things that we could look at, but, you know, we can't necessarily promise that um, you know, that 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 would be something we'd be able to do. And then especially in terms of height of trees, um obviously, the the bigger caliper trees, the more mature, it's certainly gonna drive the price up too, so.
Uh the other question I have is your fencing. Now, how does the fencing go around the front uh and and the um north side of the school, I guess? How would that go as to protect the kids during the day? Is it just uh around the the structure of the building or does it go out towards where the outdoor learning area is? Or how does that work?
Sushita, we don't fence schools or?
So I would say right now, the fence that we show uh comes around the service area and back around the the large playfield, um Ron to the north.
Okay.
Mainly just, yeah, around that large playfield mainly just to uh, you know, prevent kids and balls from going down the slope into the woods.
Right. Typically, our policy is to be able to provide fencing around the playground areas. That's what we do. We don't fence around an entire school because that would get to be extremely expensive. Um, so that that is what we do, is provide fencing at the playground playground locations.
So it'd be just around the playground and then right at the very front where you walk, or I mean, basically, your front door would be your security door is the front door, I guess.
That's correct. Yes. And that's typical. That's what we do.
Okay. Will you be having any outdoor gardening areas that some schools have? Is that, is that plans at all?
No, no, we certainly have a master plan where, you know, we've got locations that could potentially be uh, you know, a community garden or a summer garden, but it's not it's not a part of the project in terms of.
And also, um, Sushita, maybe you would know this, are you planning a digital sign out in front or what kind of a sign would that be? Do you know, Rothan?
I don't think we've looked at that yet. We don't actually have any other, any digital signs, but if the ordinance, the sign ordinance would allow for it, um, that would certainly be something we'd, we would look at.
Okay, all right. I was curious about what you thought of on that. Um, and then, of course, you've talked, already talked about the solar panels, um, and that's down the road perhaps. Um uh I think you've answered all of my questions. And I guess one last question is, are you planning for basketball courts in the playground area?
No.
No pla- no basketball.
That's not part of our.
No, no, we are not.
Okay, I'm I'm done. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, and uh Vice Chairman Blackwalder, any questions?
Okay, um, first, I'd like to say, um, I love this plan. I love the thought you guys put into it and um it's really great. I mean, right down to the very detail of of so many needs had been met by this plan and uh from the state, I won't say stage, from the the um the media areas, the cafeteria and gym areas to the outdoor areas, it's just overall, it's just really great and you've worked really well with with the town and I'm sure all your other stakeholders as well.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, it's really good.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah. So the only questions, I I have some questions about the sidewalks just because the FHA pointed them out. Um, and so I just wanna make sure that we are gonna pull those crosswalks out to where they want them. Um, and it doesn't look like it will affect the general gist of your plan, just that those crosswalks need to come closer to the road. And then the other recommendation that they made that I'm worried about is they, they recommended removing that big um concrete area that leads that has a uh, it's a, on this plan, it's a L-shaped crosswalk um across 261 and Old Bayside. And they recommended taking that whole area out. And I would prefer that we didn't do that and maybe just blocked it with some shrubbery or something so that when we do get access to that area, you still have that nice.
Plaza, yeah.
Look, type of area. Uh and I don't think you can do anything about their other recommendation about the queuing on the road. Um I don't know what you could do to accommodate that recommendation, so I would, wouldn't put a condition on that one. But the other FHA comment, I think um. But the other FHA comment, I think, um, we'd probably want Chris to take a second look to make sure that they comply. Um, and then my other question was the lighting situation, and I know you said you're drawing it up. Um, and I get looked at again and we'll, we'll have, I guess, a condition on that for Chris's eyes again. I wanted to point out that both playfields are a measurement that is half a regular soccer field and that's the area that the younger kids can actually play on and have a game, practice on. So I don't know if you're, I hate to ask you for additional things, but I don't know if your lighting plan accommodates lighting those playfields. But if anybody was interested in knowing, um, you know, some lighting on the playfields would allow for practices to be held there because it usually gets dark right, start. But again, you guys have done so much already, so I'll just make that comment and, um, and overall, it's great, I love it and uh, you guys have done a fantastic job.
This is Blackwelder, this is Mike Schuster again. Sichia, correct me if I'm wrong, when we look at the other schools, especially middle schools and high schools, um, and high school lighting, I, I think those things come in later, then maybe later, later grants or um, budgetary items either from the local district or from the state to make that improvement. I don't think they're involved in the initial um, construction plans for schools.
Well, I, I think it depends, um, site to site, but in terms of, of lighting, um, the playfield, yeah, I'm, I'm not sure. I think I, I would let, I would defer to the architectural team because I'm not sure exactly where the lighting is. But our concern really is more in terms of lighting the, the walkways, parking lot, you know, building areas for security. Um, and it hasn't necessarily been, been a top concern to light the playfield, so, um, uh, that, that would be the comment that I, that I would make. It's, it's really more, you know, in reference to the school and, and, and making sure that there's um, safety and security.
The, you know, the current lighting plan is pedestrian, is a pedestrian pathway lighting, uh, generally for the lights that we're adding. Uh, the tennis courts, I believe right now have their own lighting system in addition to that, which will be leaving intact. Um, but there was no, there hasn't been any consideration for playfield lighting uh, for, for evening practices. Uh, to be honest, usually I think we see those more at the middle school and high school level where, where the school will have a team uh, that practices there in the evening. I can't say that I've seen many of those at the elementary school level. Uh, as you note also, these are U-10 and U-12 uh, sized fields, so it's just a U-10 inset at the dash line and a U-12 on the outside uh, soccer field. So I don't, I don't see necessarily, well, you, you tell me, but I don't see the use of a adult soccer team uh, or uh, using that kind of field in the evening.
No, I was thinking more for kid practices and things like that, but yeah, you, you, I kind of figured that was the answer, but I just thought I'd point that out since you guys, um.
No, appreciate that.
You know, you seem to be able to make a lot of things work, so I thought I'd give it a shot.
Good deal.
That would be tough though.
While we're on the topic of lights, I could just add real quick that, and Joe certainly could present this, it's, it's not my job to do so much, but I do have a copy of the lighting plan and it is primarily lighting up the, the parent loop, the driveway loop, the parking lot, of course. Uh, and then along the pedestrian routes, I'm really pleased to see pedestrian scale lighting, the, the small stanchions and uh, along that main uh, avenue leading up to the front door and elsewhere in the site, so all, every place that needs to be lit up has a nice light and they're using 12-foot poles, they're not dominated with industrial-looking, commercial-looking poles, but quite modern-looking 12-foot, you know, scale to a pedestrian scale, so I was really pleased to see that. Uh, but we still need the uh, photometric study, the thing that I call the illumination study, we still need that. But uh, in terms of the, the, the lighting plan itself, it complies with modern standards that you would expect for a project like this.
Yeah, thanks, Chris, we'll, we'll definitely get the photometric study to you here, uh, as we're working forward. And I guess just to answer, um, Ms. Lawrence's question about state highway, we, we obviously will be getting a state highway access permit for the construction of the entrance onto Bayside Road. Um, and we will work through that, all their comments and conditions, you know, before they grant us that permit, so. Really a condition of the site plan approval would be, uh, you know, obtaining all necessary permits from regulatory agencies, both the county and state. And I think that would cover your, your questions or concerns. Um, and our intent is not to get rid of that wide concrete plaza, I actually don't see that in the comments, um, necessarily, it was just their comments was, we could not install the crosswalks um, at that corner until future sidewalks were constructed to tie to, so. We're gonna keep showing on our plan as future, though it's kind of designating that crossing, but the, the striping would not be installed until the what I'll call the downstream sidewalks are constructed in a future project.
Okay, um, just, just so I understand, so we wouldn't need to make that a condition, that's already a condition of this permitting process that you would have to address the FHA comment, is that correct?
I mean, that, that's a, that's certainly a fact and whether we want to just put it as a condition that we have to obtain all regulatory agencies approvals, um, kind of a standard condition. And Chris maybe could weigh in on that, but I'm sure he probably agrees.
Yeah, he just gave a thumbs up.
Yes. And I, I included that general condition in our staff report and that's a fact, a condition that applies to every site plan that we apply as a boilerplate condition.
Okay, um, having heard from all the commissioners, is there anyone from the public that would uh, like to make a comment? Uh, and could I ask you to state your name clearly so that uh, we can record who's talking? Are there any, many members of the public?
Yeah, this is Brian Wiggins, uh, from Sichia, South Chisipic. How many stairwells will be in the new building?
Two, two stairwells.
Thank you.
Larry?
Yes?
Larry, this is Kathleen, um, I just have one more question. Not to, to belabor the uh, the landscape uh, issue and the trees, but I just wanted to, I know, um, will the trees that are planted be indigenous to the, to the area here? Um, because I know a lot of times when there's, there's massive tree plantings, um, they, if they're not indigenous to the area, they, they can't survive or they don't survive and then it requires to have additional planting. So I just, uh, I'm sure it's a consideration or you're aware of it, but I just wanted to make that observation.
Appreciate that, and, and I, I, I'll speak for our landscape architect to say yes. Uh, she's very talented in her selections and her design. Um, and I'm sure that her selections will be uh, regional selections for survivability.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Majority of the planning is a native and it's required for mitigation, critical area mitigation. Um, and for instance, those uh, trees that are along the front of the building and run along the pathway are, are red chokeberry and they're typically a shrub. Um, but I'm certain they're, they're proposing here to use a tree form of them, they're actually quite beautiful seasonal, three-season beautiful tree. Um, but they are, as someone said, an understory tree, I mean, they might get 15 feet, maybe 20 feet tall, but they're not going to be the stately oak trees um, or maple trees that you might be familiar with, they're going to be more scaled to a, uh, more of a, kind of a lower-scale environment, but they are native. Uh, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to mention that during the meeting, a number of people have added comments to the chat room and I thought for the benefit of the commission, I could read those questions and the applicants could respond to them.
Yes, that, excellent, go ahead.
Okay, because not everybody wants to speak uh, live on these, at these meetings. Like, is there enough parking was a question, I actually think one of the planning commission members asked that as well. A little concern that there is not a way to get to the parking lot from Old Bayside Road. Uh, so could the applicants address that comment?
Sure. And, and that, that comes to a safety concern, uh, and I'll address it two ways. One is when the bus loop is not being used for drop-off and pickup, the bus loop can be parked. So there can be access from Old Bayside Road against this um, curb edge here as well. The other component is the safety of the students' component, where connecting through to the parking lot would mean that students that are either coming through as pedestrians or being dropped off with, by buses, would have to then tr- cross that piece of traffic, which is something that we definitely want to avoid from a safety standard on the site. Uh, but the bus loop can offer additional stacking load.
Just to, also the, the, always the goal is to separate vehicular traffic from the bus traffic as well, so that's another reason for not connecting that parking lot uh, with the entrance off the bus loop.
And Joe, can you confirm that the 90 parking spaces do not include spaces that could be placed in the bus loop?
That's correct.
Yeah, so there's much more than 90 in practice, so if there's special events, Christmas shows and whatever, uh, there's gonna be a considerably larger number than 90 on this site. Um, would, would like to know what environmental features will be included? Examples, solar panels, can you like, offer a, some perspective on the environmental features included on the building and the site?
Oh, absolutely, um, the, so the site, we'll start with the site with the stormwater management and mitigation system, uh, which is part of the sustainability approach. Uh, if you'll bear with me, um, with the mechanical system as well, and the BRS system is, is uh, offering significant points towards our sustainability goals. Um, as a lot of the monitoring and electrical control systems to reduce the energy costs of that, the building veneer and roof insulation values are part of our sustainability approach. As well as, I know as mentioned earlier, some of the, the sun uh, shading devices, so our south side will have horizontal shading devices uh, that protect from additional solar heat gain while simultaneously allowing us to have natural light imbues out to the environment. Um, air quality is a component of our sustainability approach, uh, with our both pre and post filtration system in our uh, air distribution, uh, I know there, there's, there's 50 points, there are 54 points already accomplished there, so I'm gonna miss most of them, but uh, uh, natural light imbutes to the environment, uh, are a significant part of both our design approach as well as our sustainability goals that we're trying to meet. In fact, I think I can get to my scorecard pretty quickly here, I'm gonna cheat. Because my memory is not as good, um, so the scorecard is really broken into a series of categories. Um, location and transportation, the, the access to and, and, and the way we've dealt with uh, those components, you can see that uh, sensitive land protection, um, surrounding density uh, and reduced parking footprint that Joe talked about are points that we're looking to get and that plays also into the uh, stormwater management component. Um, creating that open green site and a sustainable site was, was a lot of what we're trying to accomplish as well. Creating the open space is the point that we're getting uh, components for and the rainwater management, which is part of our stormwater uh, system. E, we're, we're doing a lot of water efficiency, uh, processing water in our kitchen is, is one of the points that we're chasing. We're metering water to make sure that we're not overusing water, uh, so, and also indoor water reducing features are part of our water efficiency approach. Uh, energy and atmosphere has to do with how much energy that, that we're using, so we're, we're optimizing energy performance both in the veneer, the way we're treating our glazed and glass surfaces, as well as the, the system, uh, being a very efficient mechanical system, which we're taking one step forward on and doing an enhanced conditioning process, which means that uh, the, the system won't just be put in as a very energy conducive system, but we're actually going to test it and prove it uh, when the project is done. Uh, our materials also, looking at a lot of recycled and locally resourced materials, uh, means that we're not, not only using uh, first-time materials, but also whatever materials we're bringing, we're bringing from within 500-mile radius, so we're not using a lot of trucking and, and wasting a lot of energy and atmospheric condition to bring the materials to the site. Uh, indoor environmental air quality is something that is really important in today's uh, world. And you can see how many points we're actually achieving in both the thermal conditioning of the space as well as the filtration and the quality of the air that we'll be providing within the space. Uh, we're getting some innovation credits, uh, and also some of the regional priority credits with um, the bay and everything around us that we'll be really careful with the runoff of our site and control of that environment. So with that, as, as I mentioned before, although our goal is only 50 points to make that lead silver, we are currently tracking in the yes column, this left-hand column, uh, the yes column, 54 points that are already a yes and 13 that are beyond that as maybes. So I think we're, we're tracking quite well and we're really proud of, of uh, what we're trying to accomplish as a sustainable building and site on this project.
Okay, um, the next question refers to the trail by the parking. I guess the parking lot, uh, how close does it come to the houses and what kind of trees are used there? So maybe you could refer to that, the, the trail both on that north side and on the south side, just so we cover both bases.
Uh, so we mean the backyards of the houses uphill from us here?
Yeah, that, that would be on that side, yeah, you have an estimate?
Jody, can you, can you eye that guy, I mean, that's.
The, the smallest uh, point there was 15 feet from the property line at that small intersection there.
And then it widens out as we get away from the site.
Yep.
And then here, there's of course, Old Bayside Road separating the, these properties from our site and that looks to be about the same, so probably 15, 15 feet as its smallest point here, and then of course, there's a stormwater management facility, uh, just to the north of that. And it creates this kind of walkway. Uh, also with, with kids in mind, trying to keep the, the sidewalk away from the street edge was a little bit of the uh, safety strategy here as well.
Okay, in terms of the um, the landscaping or the plants, many of those plants along the property lines are native shrubs. Um, and there are several small understory trees and I, I'm having trouble with flipping through the uh, this rather large file to find the names of them. Um, but the, the variety of trees and native shrubs along that, the rear yards of those, um, those lots. And then along Bayside Road, uh, as I mentioned, it's red chokeberry and it's also white fringed tree. Now, all of those are shown on this graphic as sort of red or purplish, I suppose they, they're all uniformly that color in the fall perhaps. Um, but along the pathway, internal to the bus loop, many of them are white fringed trees, which are beautiful spring trees with the white flowering uh, petals and, um, and uh, they, they will grow to maturity at about 30 to 36 feet uh, tall. Uh, so while, while you were talking earlier, I was online looking up these.
I appreciate that.
Um, and uh, so I actually provide a really remarkable view uh, from along Bayside Road in the spring when those were all in bloom. Nice job, uh, next question. Um, from Janet, I live opposite the current gym. How is the, how does the parking affect the neighboring houses? Uh, Rand, if you can take that, I'm, I'm not entirely sure how to answer it.
So I guess the, the existing gym is here. So, bear with me, um, are we talking about a backyard view uh, from these houses here? Well, let me. Well, let me just talk about the parking related to any residential
Yes, good.
adjacent, okay? So what, once the residential properties end in this location, so our parking area actually in our transit zone backs to the trees and where we start to drop off on site. Likewise, on the south of Old Bayside Road, the parking lot is, is the furthest part from the residential properties on the south. So I think actually going back to our original diagram of that transit zone, it was, we tried to intentionally locate it where it was least impactful on our, on our site as a possibility. Let me get all the way back to that original diagram, getting that transit zone as far back on the site as we possibly could. And I think actually we ended up pushing it, being able to push it back even further than we originally anticipated. Getting that corner really, that last property is, is at that location. So I hope I, I answered your question regardless of which side of the, the building that you live on.
Yeah.
Sorry?
Yes.
Yeah. I'm trying to find out because I live in that last house there.
Last house, yeah.
And right now, the parking, the people don't bother me, you know, with the parking. There's some cars that park overnight and that's what I'm worried about. This parking that's way in the back here, it's not seen from the street. There's a police officer that comes sometimes and parks right there as you come in right now. But is he gonna be back there to watch? Because that is the perfect place for people to stay overnight. And I just want to know what the security is because my back door is right there, you know what I'm saying? And the other thing is, the other thing is about the trees that I asked about. I don't want any tall trees there because I don't have any trees that I have a lot of leaves that I have to break. And if you put tall trees there, first of all, it's gonna cut my internet, I can't get internet. And then the other thing is I don't want to fix up all the tree leaves. Those are my concerns.
So as far as the security and, and police surveilling overnight, I'm not sure exactly if, if we have any agreements. That's certainly something I could, I could look into. I don't know what we typically have in terms of any sheriff's deputies and where they park.
Can I answer that, Sajida?
I'm sorry? Yes, please, go ahead.
Right, ma'am, if you're, if you're seeing folks staying overnight on our parking lot, you should be calling the sheriff's office and let them know. Lieutenant Naughton, I think is still the one in charge of the beach area. And he'll get a deputy through that spot. They are supposed to make evening and overnight checks around our campus. And there should not be any vehicles parked overnight on our school property, that that's happening.
That was happening in the summertime.
Okay, well, you can let them know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, you want to go to the next question?
Yes, then I have one question too, but so Brian followed up on his questions about the stairwells. He said, wouldn't four stairwells be better than two? Each kid would be on the stairs about six times a day minimum. One would be concerned about the traffic and safety of the students moving around the building.
Can I just jump into this? So I think the school has a very specific way that they traverse the students to go up to the second story and in this case, the third story. There is, and, and Dr. Schistler can certainly jump in on this, but really those stairs are more for life safety and exiting. Students aren't necessarily going to be entering multiple, multiple stairs and, and have just open access to those stairwells. They will be led to a certain stair to be able to go up to their classroom spaces and utilize potentially a different set of stairs if they're heading down to the cafeteria or the gym. I know that Beach currently is a single story school, but I think, you know, access within the hallways and how they direct students would kind of work the same way. So Dr. Schistler, I'll let you jump in if you want to on this.
Well, Ron, you're gonna have to refresh my memory as to how wide these stairwells are. But I'm, I'm, from what I thought you said earlier, we'll be able to have two-way traffic.
Yes. The stairs are kind of adequate width so that children can be moving up and down simultaneously. And as stair design does come originally from the life safety requirements for egress capacity. And our footprints of the upper two floors, this is not all a three-story component, only this instructional bar centrally here is, with only eight classrooms per floor as we move up through the building. So it's the use of the, the upstairs and the capacity of the students that are upstairs that really dictates how wide those stairs are and how many stairs we require. The capacity of our upper levels are actually so small that we only require the two stairs. And those stairs are, I would say oversized for the, the capacity that they're providing in those two locations. The, the in addition to that, we also talked very early in our stakeholder advisory groups about the locations of those stairs so that they would be in such a location where as soon as students coming in from the front of the building, from the front entries, get to this center, center stair tower, they can go straight up without actually traversing through the school. And likewise, the other stair is located in the proximity of the public functions in the back, the gym and the cafeteria. So those students can come straight down into those locations. So the strategy was really twofold. One, in the providing the, the capacity of the stair and the width of the stair to, to address that capacity, but also the location of the stair located strategically to get you to the functions that kids would go to. So for example, kids from the kindergarten won't be going up to the third floor to the fourth and fifth grade. But kids from the fourth and fifth grade would be coming down to the cafeteria and gym. And Dr. Schistler can, can attest that in our early planning meetings, we must have had six to eight different variety of stair arrangements, which really dictated the way that the design of that instructional bar ended up being designed.
Okay. If that issue was the rest, there's, there's one more question that just popped up. The community across from Old Bayside becomes overflow parking. With this plan, we are still going to be using that community to park. Can you comment on that? Give perspective on that question?
So the two, two things really came into play in our parking count, and I think Joe kind of touched on it a little bit earlier. One is that the zoning capacity for the building is based on the classroom, on the, that's the number of teaching spaces. So 30 teaching spaces each get three spaces each to develop that 90 value. So the parking capacity meets what the zoning criteria says is the right number of parking spaces for the school. On the other side, we're, we're really in a, in a challenge point of walking a fine line of quantity of parking where our sustainability goal says that we can't exceed the local zoning requirement because the more parking we put in, the more paving we put in and the more runoff we, we potentially can produce into the bay. So we're trying to keep, our lead requirement requires that we maximize at that same 90% and not exceed the zoning requirements. So there, we're kind of on the razor's edge of both of those, those goals. One of the things that, that Joe also mentioned in his, in his discussion was that the bus loop, although it doesn't actually add to that 90 count, can for evening use be some of that supplemental parking spaces in, in those special event criteria. But really, we are penned in by the zoning criteria in one direction and then the lead sustainability goal in the other, which I think are all really important components. So the zoning says this is what you need for the capacity and the size of the school that you have. And the sustainability says we don't want to overbuild this because it's really bad for the environment. So we're really trying to walk that fine line with our parking count.
I would just I would just
How many parking places we currently have as compared to how many you're planning to put in?
Yes, sir, we have, we have currently 60 parking spaces and we're putting in 90. So there's a, a significant increase.
I'd also just say that if you double park the bus loop on an evening activity and you parallel park the parent drop-off loop, that gains another 50 spaces, so. I honestly feel, I mean, hard to say how many people would be driving to an evening, evening event. Again, I know they get very crowded. But we're gonna be much better off now than we are, or in the future than we are now under this design.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I think that's all the comments from the chat box, is that right, Chris?
One just came up again. Another, some school events, or I guess this is a lead of, like sort of engaging in the conversation about the parking. Some school events are during the school day when the staff is there too. So
Same. Same criteria.
It's Mike Schistler again. If you're talking about something like a graduation, all right? Again, yes, we have staff that'll be there, but we're gonna have increased number of, of spaces. But we're not gonna have buses during a, during a graduation program. So we'll have that access to the bus area. And it may be like, was just suggested we use some parking along access lanes. So it, it may not be perfect and ideal, but it's gonna be, I would bet 200 times better than what we have right now. Thank you.
And it is a town and we do have overflow parking and throughout the town, whenever a major community events happen, every neighborhood has their, their experience with that. Certainly that's part of living in the community. We're gonna have that. But I have a question that has raised some concerns with me, Rand and Joe, just tonight, because I hadn't noticed the fine print. On the landscaping plan, it refers to a lot of the trees as amenity trees to be provided as budget permits. Well, that's fine, I mean, but there is some basic tree planting that's required as a condition of approval in, in the plan or the ordinance, like the parking lot trees. So I guess I just want to hear from you about what trees in your view are optional? How many of the trees that we're actually seeing on this plan can we expect to see built when school gets developed?
So I'll start by saying anything required by, by ordinance is a definite in, obviously. So parking lot trees are definitely in. The other answer to your question is every tree we can possibly get, we're gonna, we want to get into the project. We are obviously bound by our budget, so our design will include all of the trees. At the end of the day, it's going to be a matter, we're gonna do a series, series of what we call add alternates to make sure that we can get as many of the trees as possible beyond what is required by ordinance. But obviously, I think our goal is to, to do a pretty aggressive planting plan on our project. When it comes down to budget and trading a program component for a non-programmed component, I think the school district is really going to be hard pressed to select a non-programmatic required component over one that is in the program. So we, we have to kind of buffer ourselves and make sure that we can afford to build the project at all is really the challenge here. But our goal is to do as many as we can and it, all of them if possible.
Very good, thank you. I think that's a candid response is important to know. And area mitigation, you have a note there that says exactly that, you're providing all the critical area mitigation.
Yes, absolutely.
I know, I know, stormwater management plantings would be required by code. So a lot of the parking lot islands that we're using for stormwater management, obviously, would have that. All, all the stormwater management areas would be planted without a doubt.
Right. Okay, very good, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, Calvert County Public Schools for the presentation. I think you really answered a lot of questions that we had. My questions personally were about stormwater and rainwater management, and I think you have that in hand. Chris, could you go over maybe one by one what conditions you would recommend when we decide to vote on approval here?
Chris, you're muted.
Chris, are you there?
Yes, my apologies, and I'm just switching to another document where I have something written down and okay. The primary condition, or the first condition would be that all local county, state and federal permit approvals are obtained and all agency plan review comments are addressed.
Okay.
That's self-explanatory.
Any comments on that? Hearing none, what other conditions would you recommend?
Okay, the second would be that the before final approval, the applicant addresses any of the technical comments that the town engineer or Department of Public Works may have regarding the final utilities plan. This simply refers to the necessity of collaboration between the professionals in the final design of the site plan that Joe's intimately familiar with. And I just want to make sure that's part of your consideration. By the way, that deals with drainage and other, you know, infrastructure that the town might have a concern about. The third one that the photometric study that is provided by the applicant not provide or not cause any light trespass off the property. In other words, that the site, because of its use of dark sky friendly lights, directed lights onto the site and not off onto adjoining properties.
Isn't, isn't the word any light trespass off the property, that's pretty strong. Is that possible?
I, I believe so. I, maybe the project manager here will comment on that, but that's typically the case. There is some ambient light on the streets. And so some light trespass won't even be noticed. But the general attention to making sure the lighting is on the site and doesn't encroach especially onto adjoining properties is a primary concern.
Yeah, Chris, if it's, if it's worded as to adjoining properties, that's absolutely achievable and will be done.
Yeah, I think that's fair, Mr. Chairman.
Chris, you talked about the zoning code requiring bike racks. How many bike racks would be, does the zoning code require for a project like this?
It requires one space per 10 students. So considerably more than the applicant is proposing. That would be roughly 460, I mean, 46 bike spaces. But what they're proposing is one bike rack, which would have eight to 10 spaces for a bike. And in my memo, I suggested that the planning commission use its ability to modify or waive requirements in this regard because of the policy of the school board. And I would suggest that over time, as, as this town conforms itself and changes itself, becomes more bike friendly, more bike spaces will be needed and hopefully they would be added in future campaigns. But for the time being, making sure there's enough spaces for the activities at the tennis court and the, the ball field there is the principal concern that I would have.
So would there be a condition added about bike racks?
No, because they're gonna provide the bike racks, they've said they would already, but I think you have to But I think you have to affirmatively say you're waiving the requirement that they must provide one space for 10 students. Just so it's on the record and you're, you're clear. And so it's not a condition, but it is a request that you actually modify or waive that requirement so that the, the number of bike spaces be reduced to one major rack, which contains eight to 10 spaces.
Any comments by commissioners on that point?
I think that's fine.
Okay, so we can move on. Chris, any other conditions that you would recommend?
I think a number of them are covered by the general condition about the state agencies. That takes care of all S H A and matters. I thought there was one other issue, but I'm not seeing it in my notes.
As I recall, in the previous meeting, we talked about signage and that that would be something to be done by the Parent Teachers Association or some voluntary or project at a later date. Is that still the plan?
We actually are showing a sign as part of the project now, so we can certainly have it designed and it, it might be something that we might be able to incorporate with the project. Typically, we do do a new sign through a P T A.
I, I think.
Type of an activity. But I, Ron, I believe it's in, shown in the, in the plan at this point, correct?
So yeah, there, there, that would be the, the building sign that, that Chris referred to in the introduction. I think the project that's being referred to was with this trailhead. And as that gets developed in the future, that there may be, whether it be an Eagle Scout project or something like that, that starts to create some nature signage or sign about the trail that would occur to kind of, as a monument to, to identify that trailhead coming off of our sidewalk. I think that was addressed in our previous presentation.
So the signage, the town has some specific desires about signage. So that might be a condition that we get to review in the final proposal.
It, it was said that there is a sign on the current plan. Are you, are you saying there's a freestanding sign that's?
I don't know if it made it to the current plan.
Okay.
And our, our intention is to have a, a building monument sign in, at the front of the building here.
A monument sign, okay. So we can handle that two ways, Mr. Chairman. Any applicant can come in at any point with a sign permit, which gets approved administratively. Now, given that the fact that this has gone through the site plan process, if you want to see that sign for your review and you apply the standards in the code, that would be okay. But the only thing that we're looking at when we review signs is the, the size, the dimension, and to ensure that any lighting is, is per code. It doesn't cause glare off the site. So there's certain design standards for signs that have to be applied. We don't care about the content or the colors they use or anything else. Simply the size and location to make sure it doesn't block traffic.
Okay, so you're saying the condition for regulatory permit approval would, would cover that?
Yes. Yes, that's right. Yeah, right.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay, so Chris has listed the conditions that we would add. Let me make a motion that the commission approved the preliminary plan. Understanding that at a later date, we'll have, I guess, a final approval. Is that correct, Chris?
The final plan will be submitted to the town for technical review and for my review to make sure that each of your conditions are satisfied. Then I'll bring it to you, Mr. Chairman, and at the town hall or today's environment, I don't know where, but we'll make sure you get a copy and we'll certify it that it's acceptable. And then you can sign it, which makes it official.
Okay, so this, the preliminary plan that we would approve tonight with the conditions you proposed, as long as those were met, basically it's a one-person chairman with the, the help of the administrator and other technical folks at the town. As long as those conditions are met, then we move forward. If not, then we come back and talk to the Calvert County Public Schools again.
That's right. That's right. I will say, just as a side, if there were outstanding conditions that were substantive and major, you could certainly, you'd want them to come back to the planning commission, right? So that's, you know, but, but we, we have adopted a streamlined provision for getting these final plans done when there's, the issues are minor and technical.
Okay, so I would make a motion and ask for a second that we approve this plan proposed with the conditions that have been listed by the administrator. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
And we have a second. Is there any discussion, any further discussion? Hearing none. Do, let's see. Do I have anyone that does not approve of the motion? Hearing none, that means we're unanimously in approval. And Fran, if you would record that. Okay. Well, thank you very much. We really appreciated the opportunity to, to discuss your plan and it's, it's a rather exciting plan, I think. And the town looks forward to working with you and seeing this come to fruition.
Appreciate it. Thank you all very, very much. Really appreciate it.
Thanks, Chris. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good night. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate all your help.
You're welcome.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda for tonight is a discussion on zoning and height limits. We have spoken into basically two parts. First, Chris is going to discuss some current conditions in, in the town related to height limits to familiarize us with what the current situation is. And then we will, then we have Commissioner Green Gold is going to discuss her proposal. I think it's such a sweeping issue that we probably should not try and wrap it up tonight, but I'm open to suggestions there. But first, let's hear from Chris on what the existing zoning rules are. Chris, over to you.
Okay, thank you. Can the commissioner see the, my screen?
I can.
Okay, so Cindy's prepared a, a proposal. And so it's got us thinking about what the current code says. First, here's the proposal that Cindy prepared, just to put it in context. And Cindy, I just used her words from the email you sent to the chairman. The proposal is all new construction and building permits will be limited to a maximum height of 35 feet in all building zones within the town limits of Chesapeake Beach. And then Cindy provides a history of it and, and the objectives that are intended. And I'll leave those for her to describe. I just wanted to, for now, describe what it is that we're actually referring to. So it's a cap at 35 feet in all of the building zones. So I wanted to start first with what the zoning ordinance says about building height. So Article 11, Section 29043, under definitions, defines building height as the vertical measurement from the finished grade at the front, the building, to the highest point on the roof line of a flat building, flat roof building, or, you know, skip that, or to a point midway between the peak and the eaves of a roof having a slope of 50 degrees or more. So if it's a sloped roof, have a look at this drawing. There's the 35-foot max height and the line takes you to the highest point on the roof. At least it's, it's intended to. Whoops, sorry. I'm sorry. The, this, the, the mean height is the, the height along the, the eve here from the, or from the ridge, from the top to the, the eve, and that is halfway up. So currently, 35 feet, this is how the code reads, 35 feet would be the top point, which is that orange line, the flat roof, if you can imagine the flat roof going through here. Or if it's a sloped roof, it could be 35, 35 feet would reach the, the middle point of the sloped roof. So that's what the current code says. The, the reason I shared this image with you is to, to share and to, to point out that this is how many jurisdictions deal with a 35-foot maximum height. They say it's 35 point, or 35 feet to the top of a flat roof, which is the orange line, or 30 feet, two, or 32 feet, or some other measure, to the mean point, the, the distance halfway up the slope. And you can see the difference it makes. That's how, for instance, that's as an example, Chevy Chase, Maryland, Montgomery County, the entire county of Montgomery County for single-family houses has this definition. This is our definition. Okay, so you can see that the, the, this is the highest point where the orange line is, and it's also the midpoint. So what it means is that a 35-foot tall building in Chesapeake Beach is taller than a 35-foot building in other jurisdictions. And if the roof is going to be taller and sloped more, of course, the building has to be bigger too. It's rather technical and probably not what you wanted to get into so much. But I just wanted to say that in applying the ordinance, 35 feet doesn't simply top out that, at a top of the building. It only does that when there's a flat roof. When there's a sloped roof, a big portion of the roof can extend beyond 35 feet, okay? So how about the current standards in the zoning ordinance? Section 5, 29019A provides the, the dimensional requirements, the requirements and exceptions. If you go down to the very bottom, Item E, maximum building height in each of the residential zoning categories. So that you can see 35 feet, 35 feet, and 35, and 35, 35 feet is the maximum height right now in the commercial zone, the residential village, medium density and low density. It's 50 feet in the high-density zones and 70 feet in the maritime district. The maritime district includes the Rod and Reel Marina, the Fish and Fish Marina, Abner's, you know, Harbor Road, where the town hall is, and all of Kellam's Field. I have a zoning map I'll show you in a moment or two. So our, our height limits span 35 feet to 70 feet. Here's more language about heights. Article 5, Section 29019L. Height exemptions, exceptions to maximum regulations. Church spires, chimneys and antennas and other structures that are on top of a building, they can extend beyond the maximum height, no matter what that height is. If it's 70 foot, 50 or 35, a chimney can extend beyond that limit. And it's, it could extend up to one foot for every one foot of setback of the structure. So if there's a, if the building's 10 feet from the side lot line, the chimney can extend 10 feet above 35 feet. Okay? Or church spire, for that matter. Here's an interesting thing that I think Cindy discussed in a, in an email. For multiple family dwellings and commercial uses, the finished lot grade used to establish the maximum height shall be considered the first floor of living space measured at the front door for any structure for which off-street parking is provided under the living space. So what that says is if you provide parking under your apartment building, you don't start counting the height of the building until you, until you go above that parking garage or that parking level. So typically, that parking level is going to be 10 feet. It's going to be nine to 11 feet. You would go up to that level, say 10 feet, and then you would count to 35 or 50 or 75 feet, okay? That applies to both commercial uses and multifamily dwellings. But it is capped. It's capped. You can't go any higher than one foot for every foot of setback. That's the, the parking area. So you can't just make a, a parking area that's 20-foot tall just to get above, you know, if, if you're really close to a, an adjoining lot line. So it, it attempts to manage that little bit. However, if it's a standalone building, farly, fairly distant from any adjoining lot lines, you can imagine that the, the height of the parking level could get considerably large. And then you'd start counting 50 feet from that point.
So Chris, considering a townhouse where the lot line is right along the, the adjoining wall between homes, they, they are struck with the 35-foot height limit as it exists today.
That's right. Good observation. That's right. Which is more than adequate for a townhouse with, with a garage inside. The height of replacement dwelling. Okay, so Article 5, Section 29019D3. The height of a replacement dwelling shall be no greater than the dwelling to be demolished, except that only such additional height as may be required to adhere to flood protection elevations is allowable. So, you know, this reflects the idea that if your house is destroyed by a flood, you can build it back and still elevate it without being imposed upon you, forcing you to have a smaller house or shorter house. So it also gives an incentive for people to get out of the floodplain and comply with the floodplain ordinance. Okay? Then there's height that's discussed in the non-conforming use section of the code, Section 29028D. Nothing in the regulation shall prevent the reconstruction or restoration of a non-conforming building destroyed by fire, storm, explosion, et cetera, provided that the reconstructed structure should not exceed the height area or volume of the damaged structure, except for provided in subsection C. Subsection C is not relevant to the height. We're not to focus on that exception. But basically, you could build it back, but you can't build it back taller than the structure that existed. If you get, if you get wiped out by the flood, you can't build it taller, except to which hearkens back to the previous standard. And then this may be the last place where building height is really discussed in a regulatory standpoint. And that's the bonus density overlay district. It's Section 290-15E. It's Section 290-15E. For the purpose of this section, in other words, for the purpose of the bonus density overlay, and provided that the conditions set forth in Section D above are met, and those sections are all about design and quality of design and walkability, the planning commission may authorize, may, may authorize an increase in the height of multifamily buildings to a maximum of 50 feet measured to the eve plus a habitable roof. And again, there's a provision about the side yard setbacks. But essentially, this says that in some zones, like the residential village zone that allows multifamily dwellings, but caps height at 35 feet, if you introduce a multifamily building and you can meet these setback standards and the planning commission agrees with it, you can go up to 50 feet. And there's really only one place in town where this provision actually applies anymore. But anyway, within the bonus density overlay district, you can go up to 50 feet for a multifamily building. Oh, I'm sorry, up to 50 feet to the eve, which is, you know, where the gutter is going to hang off, plus a habitable roof, which could be another 10 or 12 feet, right? So those are the current standards on building height. Oh, here's the bonus density overlay district. The first arrow points to this area along First Street, David Street, D Street. This area is owned for residential village and it's part of the bonus density overlay. So an apartment building built there could go up to 50 feet plus a habitable roof, assuming you could consolidate enough of those smaller lots together to build something of that size. The second overlay district is here. And this parcel is the parcel where Mama Lucia's Italian Restaurant is. The restaurant is on the front parse, part of it, but the entire landholding is contained in the same ownership as the restaurant, the lot. So that particular group of individual parcels are permitted to have 50-foot-tall buildings, even though there's owned residential village. And then lastly, the, the major area for overlay district is this area I'm outlining now. It comes over, crosses Fish and Creek, picks up Abner's and Harbor Road and the apartment buildings there, goes over to the Rodden Real Resort and Restaurant and encompasses the high-density housing that is in the bay here and goes up and picks up the intersection of 260 and 261 and the town hall and then comes back to encompass Kellum's Field. So this center of town, which is owned maritime in the zoning ordinance, that is part of the bonus density overlay. Now, you might say, well, aren't we already allowing buildings to be 70 feet in that district? And the answer is yes. So the bonus density doesn't affect building height in this area. What it affects is density, is the number of units that you can build per square foot of lot area. So here, the, the height is already maxed out at 70 feet and you can't go higher than that.
Chris, just one question. Going back to your map there, the two areas that we talked about doing are resource conservation areas. They're the north end of town.
Yes.
The, yeah, right there. Well, actually, yeah, a little south of those, the two squares below your arrow. Anyway, they, Rodden Real or the Donovan's had planned to build 255-foot-tall buildings with, I think, 18 units each on each of those squares. But what this shows me is that that would no longer be allowed. Is that correct?
Yes, because when that project was first proposed and actually approved, it was approved, but it has expired. The approval expired. During that time, the zoning map classified that area's bonus density overlay. But the town council amended the zoning map and lifted the overlay district from that section of town. And that's why we have these remnants up here and here, because all of this was in the bonus density overlay.
Okay. And the, the bonus density overlay is, has a red line as the boundary. And I guess the red line on the northernmost one is along Route 261. Is that correct?
No, it's behind it. It's, it's behind it.
A little steep.
Right, it's behind that row of houses.
Okay. Okay, well, excuse me for interruption.
No, that's it. So that's what the current zoning says about height in a nutshell. You also wanted me to offer some perspective on how it is that the planning commission can change the zoning ordinance or how you go through that approval process. And I could do that whenever you, you want me to.
Why don't you go ahead if you would?
Okay. Oh, by the way, while we're here, just as a, you know, if you've never thought through these things before, building height in stories, if you had a 35-foot-tall building, that's really going to give you two and a half to three stories. A 50-foot-tall building will give you four to four and a half stories. And a 70-foot building would give you six, six and a half stories. Maybe even seven if the design of the building is really poor. But generally, we're looking at kind of this configuration for a 70-foot-tall building. And of course, I just wanted to comment that in town for multifamily buildings, we don't count the, the parking under the building. You, you start counting once you got above the parking level, if it's, if the building is built above a parking area. Okay, so how, how, how is it that the planning commission can make a zoning change? First, for instance, if, if you wanted to make a zoning change, you could direct me to draft the amendments that would be necessary. Then you'd review the draft amendments at a meeting. And if the planning commission supported it, you would set a public hearing date. Then you would hold a public hearing. And either that night, you know, after the public hearings finished or at a future meeting, you could decide to approve it or approve it with conditions or not approve it. You know, it would just die. Or, or then, if you approve it, you transmit it in writing to the mayor and council. This is our recommendation. We'd like you to change the zoning ordinance to bring this change about. Then the council gets it. And if they're interested in what you've sent to them, they could hold a work session to discuss the recommendation. That's typically what they would do. Then they, an official ordinance gets introduced. And what this means is that the ordinance that I drafted for you goes to the town attorney just to get any proper form established. And then the planning committee, or the, the mayor and council would hold a public hearing. And then again, it would decide whether to approve, deny it, or, or amend it. They, they often do that. And then it becomes effective. And I think it's 20 to 24 days. I can't recall the exact number. Maybe Fran knows. But so, so that's the, the process from moving from where you are tonight to having these standards in place. We're having such, such standards in place.
All right, so let me turn it over to Commissioner Green Gold and we can hear the proposal.
First of all, thanks, Chris. You did a great job on, on that presentation. It kind of spells it out really clearly. I think one thing that this pandemic has, oh, two things that's happened in the past two years. One thing has been the construction of the Rodden Real parking lot. And the second thing has been this pandemic. And the reason there's confluence there is that people have seen what the, the, pretty much the maximum height of that maritime area is. And they're not real happy with it. And as we now have this pandemic, we're all getting out and talking to our neighbors to see what they really are thinking. And they really are concerned about losing our small-town feel. Now, I know we've discussed it as a, as a committee. I think as we progress in our planning to now open up that entire ball field area down there with the, where the town center is, I think now's the time we have to realize our potential and realize our, what we have as a goal for this community. And from what I've been hearing from most of you and what I've been hearing from the people in the town is that they really want to retain the lower density, the smaller-town feel, the openness of what we have right now. Most people that I've talked to, and, and many of them were very angry after that was built, that parking lot was built, they're very concerned about losing their resource of being able to see the bay, of being able to feel the breezes, of being able to feel like there's some open space and some openness in, in the sky and, and just the resources that we currently have. So I think I'm bringing this forward to you now to get an understanding and maybe a direction, maybe offer a direction to, to Chris or whomever about possibly changing or modifying those height limits. When I, I just came back from California and of course, there, all the coastal towns are going, going much lower in their heights, in their heights, building heights. St. Michael over across the bay, who I modeled my ideas after, of course, they're at this 35 feet. And of course, and they go an extra three feet for this free boarding, which is another issue that we should be talking about as far as the, the water issues are concerned. But they go to 35 for all building structures and then another three for that free, free, I think it's called free boarding, right? Yeah, for, for the flood protection. So then there's Oxford across the bay as well. They do this, they have the same exact height limits. So it's not like I'm just throwing this number out as a, you know, something out of my own head. I'm actually bringing in, you know, examples from, you know, cities all over the country, actually, that are trying to regain and retain their small-town feel, not let the investors come in and raise down these little cottages and then just put up these, you know, five-story buildings on us. So I can, you obviously have read what I've written. It's very simple. I would recommend that we either discuss tonight, maybe an idea to have Chris bring back some new language and, and go forward with making a, a change in our zoning height, in our height, building height. And these, especially, we've, we've got it now pretty much in every zone except for those two particular zones where we've got 50 and 70. That's where we have to do the modifications as Chris has taught, has told us about.
Okay, so the, the proposal that was written was to change it to 35 feet throughout Chesapeake Beach everywhere. Chris, besides the beach elementary, which we've approved to exceed the 35-foot limit, are there any other projects on the books or that you're familiar with that are currently being considered that would exceed the 35-foot limit? I know that even in the maritime zone or where else.
The, the only one that I'm aware of is the one that I actually thought would have come to you in the spring or early summer for your review. And that was called Harbor Vista South. And it was a multifamily building, a condo building, I believe, or apartment building. And it, it looked to be well over 50 feet. And it contained five stories above the parking lot. So that would not be allowed under this zoning change. However, that project may not be allowed anyway based on the letter, the interpretation of the zoning ordinance I made. And I believe the planning commission got a copy of that. So that issue, that project has not been renewed or brought to our attention since the letter was drafted and sent to them. But this would effectively deny any, any resurrection of that concept.
Right. The, in the, 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 the townhouse is across the street from town hall. Just looking at them, they're four stories. So I assume they exceed the height, the 35-foot height limit. And if, since they're on the waterfront, they are directly in, in line for hurricane damage or being wiped out from some event like that. And the code says they would, would not be allowed to rebuild. I guess they're in the maritime zone, so they could rebuild now to the current height as they were. But under a 35-foot limit, they would not be allowed to rebuild. Is that correct?
No. So first of all, they're not in the maritime zone. They're in a high-density residential zone. And the maximum height there is 50 feet. And they're under that maximum. Of course, some of them are at 35 feet or lower, but the end unit seemed, seemed to pop up pretty high. They get pretty close to 50, if not right on it. But if they are wiped out in a storm, they could build back to the, but no taller than their current height. So if they're 50-
Under, under the current rules.
Yes.
Under the current rules.
Yeah, they're entitled-
If we change the rules to a 35-foot limit, they could not rebuild.
No, they could still rebuild because they're, they're non-conforming use and the owner has a right to them. And as the code is written now, you can build back to what you had. It would be a non-conforming use. You're, you're vested in that. Now, if they voluntarily take the, a block of those townhouses down and decide to re-subdivide and redevelop it, then they're going to be capped at 35 feet. But if it's a, an act of God or storm, they can rebuild their house.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? Comments, questions?
I'd like to make a comment. You know, I, I live up on, on B Street. And I have a prime example. My neighbor, my immediate neighbor to the right, the 35-foot variance. He, he already had a variance to build as closer to the, you know, within less than 20 feet to the edge of the hillside. But then he, the way he met the 35-foot is that his roof actually slopes like, like an arc. So I guess at the, at the midpoint of the, of the roof, it's 35 feet. But on either edge, it's above 35 feet. And I guess if you would see his house next to the other houses in the, in the neighborhood, it's clearly, it, it's obvious that it's above 35 feet. And now they've built another structure, and this is residential. They've built a structure three houses down, which again, is coming right up to that edge. And so in lieu of that, I'd like to, I'd like to change the, the provision that it's a 35 maximum instead of the 35 height requirement because with the sloping roof, you can actually go above that. And, and it's, you know, and I think everybody, every builder or architect understands this and they realize this is a way to kind of maneuver around that height requirement. So I just want to offer that, um, just because I've had firsthand experience with it.
Yeah, well, I think uh, uh, Chris, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but there beside Lido Pizza. Uh, there was a house that was built that uh, exceeded the, the limit. Um, by a couple feet or something and they were denied a uh, uh, uh. Uh, the permit to move, move people in. And, and what they did instead was lowered the eve on the house. So that they could essentially lower the midpoint of the peak between the eve. And meet the thirty-five foot limit and that allowed them to uh, get their, their residence permit. So, so at the Chatham's port, yeah, I mean, architects will play with this and, and maneuver around, but it is. It is limited to the extent that uh, uh, it's, it's gotta be thirty-five foot to the midpoint of the peak and the eve. Uh, Jonathan, do you have any comments?
Uh, no, sir, not, not really. Um, I think it's a good idea and I, I agree that a lot of the residents. Want uh, lower structures in the future. So I'm on board with it.
Okay, and uh, so this would be, we would change the high-density and the maritime zones. Since everywhere else is the, I mean, if we kept the thirty-five foot. Uh, between the peak and eve as it stands now in the other uh, resident zones. If we uh, uh, what we would have to do is change the maritime zone and the high-density zones. Is that correct, Chris?
Uh, yes, that's right. Uh, and remove reference to the bonus density overlay provisions. My point of going through all these things is I think we need to make a zoning amendment to multiple sections of the code to deal with the thirty-five foot limit.
Right.
Yeah, so.
Right, it's not a simple.
Right. Right.
Right.
Uh, you know, have you, have you seen in North Beach? Uh, uh. Just in, in sort of in response to Kathleen's observations, in, in, in North Beach, there are a number of houses that I think they were called. Uh, like, I, I might be wrong about this, but like pancake houses, like they're. They're thin houses on small lots and they go up to thirty-five feet to the max with a flat roof. And this is like one level on top of the other. It doesn't look like any house you'd ever want to live next to. Uh, it, it, it doesn't have a cottage feel. It looks rather um, industrial. Let's show.
It's a kid with Legos. Yeah, it's a kid with Legos, you know. Yeah.
That, that is possible in just each too. That is possible.
I think.
I know. That worries me.
Has a completely different approach. They, they allow four-story houses. Uh, a lot of the new houses in North Beach on small lots are, are four stories or more. Um, so they have a different set of rules. I, I don't know what they are, but they're uh, they're certainly different than ours. And I see them, they're along the boardwalk and along the uh, uh, waterfront. And uh, even several blocks back from the waterfront, you see four-story homes, which obviously they exceed the thirty-five foot guidance. I don't know what their guidance is.
Now, the other, the other uh, side to this that I did not include is that in, like in Saint Michael's, for example, they've limited the number of stories. So you can have a thirty-five foot height, but only two and a half stories max. So that would eliminate that idea of the three-story multi-use. Uh, you know, a building that we talked about on uh, you know, two sixty-one, et cetera. Which to me is okay. I mean, I don't mind, but I, I don't have to have that as part of this. I think the height limit is more important. Uh, than, than worrying about the amount of, the amount of uh, stories. But I can also go that route if everybody here wanted to go to that, to that extent. But I think time is of the essence and um, we have a lot of investors coming into town. Um, I know that in Oxford, they told me today when I talked to the planning department over there, they said that. People are coming in and buying ca- uh, paying cash for all their waterfront properties. And uh, without even blinking an eye, they take it over in one day and pay cash. So there are a lot of investors out there that are waiting and chomping at the bits. So I think that we really need. And I've already talked to people on the town council who are, who are somewhat in, in agreement that this might be a way to go for our town. That we need to uh, make a move now and start getting these uh, these changes uh, happening uh, as soon as we can. So uh, Lori, we haven't heard from you. What is your, what is your thoughts on this? What are your thoughts on this?
Um, so I think that it's great that we're going to um, you know, reduce the amount of height that we're talking about. I, and I, I hear you about the two-point-five stories and that's also my concern, because if you drive down Fifth Street. And you look at the, the different structures that are thirty-five feet, you can get a whole gamut of different things. And you might like some, you might not like some, whatever. There, you, you get a lot of different stuff. Um, so. I think that we do this in two parts and we say. We, we, we're reducing it even further under my plan. We say unless otherwise specified. The allowable height of structures developed or redeveloped in any zone is twenty-five feet or two and a half stories, not three stories. And so then with the, um, and then you follow that up with. Buildings exceeding a height of thirty-five feet will not be permitted in any primary or overlay zones within town. And so that handles both aspects of that. You have a two-story, you know, typical house or cottage. Or you have a little bit more room. Um, and then. Regardless of which way we go, we definitely have to get rid of that parking underneath thing and make thirty-five feet start at grade level.
That's right. I was gonna bring that in next. Uh, the next, go ahead, I'm sorry.
All right. And the other thing I would say is um, to me, um, rather than. Than height, which I'm glad we are reducing the height and I think definitely on, on an immediate basis, we need to do that. So we just don't get weird stuff. Um, but as far as for developing small-town charm. Everybody who actually cares about this does architectural design standards. And that is what makes an area charming, because people don't just put up the cheapest material they can. Put up and then go rent their house out. Um, so I think that developing architectural design standards is very key. If we're ever, you know, even with this density, but um, we never should have been talking about. All these tall buildings without that in place. So we, and we should never talk about it again without that in place. So I would like to, and this comprehensive plan, address architectural design standards and, and. I would like to make that recommendation to the town because it is a process and it does cost money to, to get them made. Or I would like to recommend to the town that when we do that playground and that park, um, that we do them together. Um, with the path and we include in the whole RFP, the design standards for the town center. And it doesn't mean that we have to build any building in that park, but at least we would have them to prevent. Um, you know, this problem of haphazard. Construction everywhere. And to me, that would be the most efficient way to just start building a very aesthetic. Uh, situation for our town and it, and it wouldn't require actually building any. You know, any structure, but if we had those design standards as part of the park plan and the path plan around the park. And the redevelopment of that area, it would be very helpful. And um. So that's what I would like to recommend. And I actually, I've recommended it several times, but I would love it if our planning commission officially recommended it.
That goes, that goes to the comprehensive plan, the uh, uh, that is the design standards portion. Which we can uh, deal with in, in the work session. A couple of my observations. First, uh, uh, Lori, you talked about uh, doing away with. Uh, parking under, uh, under the house, if you will. Uh, that means there's more parking on the street, uh, and the parking becomes a bigger problem. And an example, in, in my mind, my neighbor, I went to the uh, variance hearing. When they were going to build their house, they had a lot, they planned to have two families in the house. And uh, they had one, a one-car garage. And the uh, question was, well, where are all these families gonna park? And the uh, variance hearing, uh, they promised, the builder promised to provide a couple extra parking spots out front. Well, that never happened. And so it's, everybody's parking on the street. And it's uh, so by denying the opportunity to park under the house. Uh, you're, you're just adding to the parking problem out on the street. My second observation is there's a large area of Chesapeake Beach is uh, flood-prone. Um, and uh, those houses like mine, which are on the water. And uh, and relatively low, Hurricane Isabel hit some of my neighbors really hard. Uh, the, the uh, one way of uh, addressing that is you build a house up. And you have, have it up above the flood plain, uh, so that they uh, people can continue living there. And if you allow them to park in that area under the house, it uh, uh, it works. Um, so I'm, I'm a little concerned about uh, ideas that would uh, prevent. Uh, homeowners along the waterfront from addressing the uh, uh, storm uh, damage. Uh, by, by going up. Anyway.
Uh, so Larry, I think you probably misunderstood me. Um, I didn't, I wasn't referring to like not allowing a garage under a house. Uh, what I was saying is the height limit would start at grade level. So you don't have a garage and then you go up from the garage and add thirty-five feet, making it a forty-five foot structure. It's, the grade starts at the garage, is what I was saying.
The code, it says multi-family units have, that are allowed to do that, but single-family units are not. Is that correct, Chris?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, so.
Right.
So it's a, it's kind of a different issue, but uh, uh, you had mentioned a twenty-five foot height limit. On, on houses, that uh, seems to me much more restrictive than we currently have.
Yes, and um, yeah, and, and I, I think in some areas, appropriate.
It's uh, it's kind of tough to have a garage on the first floor in a twenty-five foot tall house.
Well, and a lot of areas, it's single-family houses that have driveways and um, garages on the side, like, like my house isn't. I believe a thirty-five foot limit in my neighborhood. I, I just don't think it's appropriate for every single place to have that thirty-five foot limit. Because what you might get is what you find on Fifth Street, which is a hodgepodge of all kinds of crazy things. That people make, um, because they just want to run it out and make some money. Um, and so certain areas I think should remain that single-family home character and that, that doesn't equal thirty-five feet. That equals two and a half.
And, and the other thing is Larry, a lot of these homes are allowed, are being allowed to be built much deeper. So if you reduce the depth of a house, you could add for parking in front. So that you don't have to necessarily build high, you just allow for the parking to be out and the house is gonna be. Yeah, not as huge as some of these people want to build. You don't have to have a four thousand or three thousand square foot house on the bay. Just because you have the money. So I think we have.
When you've got, when you've got a thirty-foot, a thirty-foot wide lot, uh, that's a hundred feet long, you're not gonna get a four thousand. Square foot house under, on it, under any circumstances. But you look, look around Chesapeake Beach in the areas we're talking about, trying to retain the small-town atmosphere. They're all very small lots. Um, and so uh, when you, you can't, you, you can't. Reserve a, a large area of that lot for parking and still have any reasonable-sized house to put on it. And what the, the width of the lots uh, around uh, let's see, north of, of two sixty-one, what are, what are they? Chris?
Uh, they vary. Many of them are fifty feet wide. Um, some are as big as seventy foot. It's a smattering, but fifty foot, actually some are even more narrower, these old non-conforming cottage lots. But fifty is kind of right where things are, uh, on average.
Well, my, the lots in my neighborhood are thirty, thirty feet wide.
Yeah, you have the, the old traditional lots on the water that people have built on. And there, it's, it's impossible for people, um, those old houses that were falling down would have never have gotten built. They would have been dilapidated structures if, if it was capped at twenty-five feet. The, the fact that you could get two levels of living space above your garage is what allowed those areas to redevelop. Um, so I've seen many of those houses on that C Street go through the permit process. Maybe, not many, but at least three over time, four. Um, so yeah, the standard house needs two, two, you know, typically two levels. Can't build a rancher on a small lot like that. So you do go up, you have to get into the flood plain. And you have the buffer regulations which require you to be further away from the water. So everything's condensed and what it does is pushes things up.
Well, I mean, I just want to offer that here on B Street, um, you know, I have a house si- six blocks down that they got a variance to go over thirty-five feet. And the house fell on the other house and now both properties have been vacant almost nine years. Um, but what happened is the hill, where the, the winds couldn't sustain, there was poor construction on the house. It was above thirty-five feet and with the winds and the storm, it toppled the house onto an existing house. Injuring people and uh, destroying the other house. So um, you know, the, with the instability as well as on the hillside, you know, and then you have these uh. Compromising or working around the thirty-five feet uh, height requirement. It, it's just a bad formula. And um, not to mention, um, some of these lots are, are fifty feet wide. And you know, I, I certainly offer you to come take a, a drive next to my house on B Street and you'll see. What a, I mean, the house is beautiful. Should it be on a cliff in California? Absolutely. Um, and it's, you know, it's just, it dwarfs the houses that, uh, I mean, my house is two thousand, a little over two thousand square feet. This house is probably four thousand square feet and it just dwarfs it and it changes the complex. The complexity or the complexion of the neighborhood. And now I see the second house going up four houses down. And again, it's, we're right at the limit for the height. And these, I understand, these are typical, the houses that were the original beach homes. Didn't have the height or the, you know, the, this footage that these do. And I understand, you know, I, I, my house was six hundred square feet when I bought it. Uh, but you know, I, I have sons and we needed to have some living space more than just uh, one bedroom. So yes, we added, but we only went to two thousand. Could I have gone to four thousand? Sure. Um, but, so I do think that it's really important, it is going to change the complexion. And it has begun to of the small-town feel when you have these huge, you know, and because they're on the water, people want to do that. Um, they're, I think they're more inclined to because they want to capitalize on that. Um, they're, I think they're more inclined to because they wanna capitalize on that view.
May I suggest that we, um, I think we all have a similar idea of what we want here. That maybe we can ask Chris to go and, uh, write up some amendments. I mean, can you possibly write up some language that would incorporate these ideas, Chris? Um, and I know you probably have to include, uh, I don't know if the, uh, freeboarding is something that we have to, you know, the, the flood protection, you know, base flood, flood elevation that we've gotta deal with and all that. We have the extra footage there we've gotta deal with. So, I mean, there's all kinds of issues that come into this. I understand that. Um, and that's why I would like the pro to try, try and come up with some new ideas here on, on, uh, the building height. Um, does anybody have any, um, reasons to not have Chris do this? Or can we direct him to go ahead and write this language up for us, bring it back at the next?
What, what specifically are, are we requesting, are you suggesting Chris write up?
I'm asking him to, uh, amend all the, uh, hot, well, I know that Laurie is looking at twenty-five, but I think realistically, if we can come to some agreement here, that maybe thirty-five, uh, feet, um, uh, in all zones, the height. Um, and that would include the roof. I mean, that would include the top of the roof, uh, as far as the height limitation. And then, um, uh, I would like some language in there about, uh, starting at, uh, grade level instead of starting above the garage, 'cause I think that's where we get into trouble with these townhomes as well. Um, but that's pretty much what I would like him to write up. Um, does anybody else have any other suggestions? I mean, that's what my, uh, proposal was, and that's what I would like to see in the town. And everybody's quiet.
Can we, I, I, I like the maximum of thirty-five feet, um, with starting like thirty-two feet and then maximum thirty-five, 'cause I do, I, I think that thirty-five feet, you can, you can go above that and you can get around it. So I, I like reducing it to thirty-five, thirty-two feet with a maximum of thirty-five.
That was, uh, one of the two suggestion or options that Chris had presented. Is that what you're saying?
Yes. The lesser, the lower one. Um, my own, and then my only other concern with that, so in, um, are you saying all the residential areas, the maximum height is thirty-five feet? Like, that's a typical two-story house? Because what I want to avoid is having the weird three-story houses in awkward places. And I, and I get how, like, on some of the flatter waterfront they work, but I don't.
Then include the two and a half sto-, then include two and a half stories like St. Michael's has. Then include that, 'cause that's how St. Michael's gets around it. Uh, I had a long discussion with their planning people today, too. I mean, them and Ochsford and Logan Beach, I've all talked to them. And that's what they, that's how they get around it, two and a half stories max. So we can go that route. I'm perfectly happy to do that as well.
And so I think that's appropriate in some places, maybe not necessarily every place. And so that could be, you know, a different discussion. I'm, you know, I'm more, I, yeah, I think some language needs to be written to, to definitely reduce everything down to no more than thirty-five feet. Um, but I, I also don't wanna open up everywhere for thirty-five feet. And then plus say, okay, you can also make this a, a multi-family home and a condo and this, that, and the other. There's a lot more to talk about on that front. But, yes, I'm, I definitely wanna get away from anything that's gonna allow a seventy-foot or a fifty-foot like that. So, I, Chris, what are your thoughts?
My thoughts are if you wanna really engage the public and have a packed public meeting hall, that's capped building heights. Um, you're gonna get a lot of feedback. And what I'm suggesting is that I don't think it's simple as saying there's a max. Um, I think it's a neighborhood issue. I think it's neighborhood-sensitive. I think what's good for B Street is not good for, um, the middle subdivision or, um, Larry's neighborhood. There's so many variables in here. Um, you know, there are buildings that are maxed out at thirty-five feet in Richfield Station that, those over-under townhouses. They go up. They provide incredible opportunities for affordable housing, for young families, for teachers and all that. You couldn't do that if you had thirty-five foot. So you're carving, I mean, a twenty-five foot or you're thirty-five, thirty-two at the max, you know. So you're carving out a housing type from the town, which means you're carving out people that can live in the town. So there's all these sort of implications to these changes. Um, but it, oh, having said all that, I think you need flexibility in the town center. So if you're gonna say cap it at thirty-five, cap it at thirty-five, but don't deal with the, um, two-and-a-half-story issue there. There, allow you as the planners to shape a development plan that makes sense, you know. Uh, engage with the development, make sure there are standards that have to be achieved, and then allow some flexibility. Um, but in other areas, I think capping it at thirty feet to the mean and thirty-five feet to the peak is probably better, even better than thirty-two feet. Um, I mean, that's what jurisdictions all over do in terms of getting single-family, even in Annapolis. You can't build a single-family house in Annapolis that's thirty-five feet. It's, uh, you know, it's really actually thirty feet, and then the roof can pop up to thirty-five feet. Um, the roof can't pop up to forty feet, you know, with the thirty-five-foot mean, whi- which is where we are, you know. I mean, you could have roofs at forty feet, depending on how big the house is. Um, as the house gets bigger, the roof gets, the slope gets longer, so you can have a huge house.
Right, so, Chris, I'm sorry to, let me interrupt you for a minute. So this is kinda like exactly what we're trying to avoid, is these weird houses. So, some of our neighborhoods are cottage neighborhoods. They have a cottage feel. And I understand that people want to develop something else, but that's not necessarily what our town needs. We don't, you know, we, we don't necessarily need all this weird construction in certain areas. And, uh, I think we need to figure out which areas we want to allow to do that. 'Cause if you drive down Fifth Street, there's a lot of weird stuff on Fifth Street that I would not want in Chesapeake Beach, and a lot of other people wouldn't either. So.
What I'm gonna say is, uh, as I prepare a draft ordinance, I don't think it's a one-size-fits-all. Because, um, you might think that twenty-five foot or thirty feet works in the, um, the campground neighborhood. Um, but for someone who has a growing family and has expectations of expanding their house, and they can't do another half-story, when it's a typical housing type elsewhere in the town, you're really imposing a burden, and you'll, you'll hear it. I mean, so I've, I've gone through this process before. In fact, I tried to do this, this very same thing, uh, with the planning commission about four years ago, and it didn't go anywhere. Uh, but what I learned was that we really needed to engage with the people that would be affected by this. Because every neighborhood has a different perspective on, on this question and where their tolerances are. And by and large, most people are not thinking as architecturally sensitive as you guys are. Particularly you, uh, Laurie and Cindy. They, people aren't thinking about that. They're thinking about, not so much what their neighbors are gonna do, but they're thinking about what they are doing and what ordinance you're imposing on them, keeping them from doing what they think is reasonable. And so it's, that's the reality. So you have to sort of navigate this very carefully, engage people. Uh, and I, I just don't know that the mayor and council would simply take an ordinance that capped it at thirty-five feet and hold a public hearing. I think it would, it would just die. Or they would send it back to you and ask you to engage the community, go through a public involvement process, talk to Larry's neighborhood, talk to the builders, talk about what's practical, getting sea level rise and flood zones. Um, so it's just, it's complicated. But I, I, I'm happy to draft something like sort of that captures all of this, these realities, then gives you a chance to, you know, say this doesn't make sense, or this is a little too liberal here, this is. But the big picture, I think the fundamental picture is that you're bringing down buildings from seventy feet to thirty-five feet. And you're bringing buildings from fifty feet to thirty-five feet. And I think if you sort of keep it at that higher level, then you can deal with these detailed things through a design standards approach. And maybe you should shoot for the big-picture idea now, the, the density issue, the massing issue, and deal with these smaller design issues later. And if you, um, want me to, if you feel that a project comes in at thirty-five feet and looks like these pancake houses, I'll bring it to you as the planning commission and let you guys go through the review process on it. So you can deal with the, the ins and outs of it. But we haven't really seen many of those, uh, issues, um, in a, in a long time. I don't know that North Beach gets them, but, you know, Fifth Street's in, outside of town. Um, so I've actually been really successful getting people to, to design a little bit more to residential type, to sort of back them off of things.
It seems to me the, the, uh, driving force, the initial driving force for this was, we had, uh, the presentation you made a couple weeks ago about the town center. And to try and keep, uh, that still viable as the small-town feel for that center. Uh, so if you drafted something that addressed just that area, uh, to protect it from, uh, being overbuilt while we're trying to get this town center approved, um, how does the commission feel about that? As a, a, a limited proposal, and see how that, how, how that goes with the town council and, and how difficult it is to get through.
I'm a little worried that we are restricting ourselves, because that, that would be the maritime area, correct, Chris? That's the maritime area he's talking about? So, uh, you're then, uh, then we're allowing the high-density residential to be vulnerable, uh, to fifty feet in that meantime. So my, my concern is if we don't attack those two zones now, um, but, you know, as Chris is telling you, it takes a long time to go through these processes. I mean, it could take six months or even longer, but by the time it comes back and forth and back and forth. So that's why I'm trying to deal with those, at least those two zones now. Um, uh, and as Chris says, we can, we can possibly deal with the, uh, the housing situation like what Kathleen's talking about with more design elements or, um, the fact we're not, we, we shouldn't have setbacks. We shouldn't have a lot of other things going on. But I'm worried about those two, uh, zones, uh, how vulnerable they both are to over-intense, uh, development. So, yes, Larry, um, that is the, I guess we could, our goal would be to try and give them direction for that town center, but I just wanna make sure that the high-density residential is also included in on that somehow, if you know what I mean. Does that make any sense?
Yeah, the, the high-density residential.
Yeah, it was a thing, but it, we just, we, uh, as, as Chris said, uh, four years ago, several years ago, they tried to do something more ambitious and, and it died. And so if we try, if, if we get too ambitious with, uh, our proposal, we may end up with nothing.
What I.
What, I mean, oh, go ahead, Chris.
Oh, I was just gonna say, um, so there's a bigger risk here. Because we, we're, we're, we have a comprehensive plan pending. And, um, there is a possibility first that we take our eye off that ball. It's gonna require public hearings and a lot of deliberation and consensus building on this height issue. If we go a little bit too far with it, you know, too fast. Um, and even if we don't, even if we do an incremental approach, like say, within the maritime district in the high-density district, or like, we're just bringing everything to thirty-five, just flat thirty-five, without dealing with the intricacies and all these, just simply thirty-five feet. Um, it, that will be the label that's put on the comprehensive plan. So because we're, the comprehensive plan and this zoning change is running parallel, people will think that the comprehensive plan is reducing building heights, for better or for worse. That's what people will show up to either complain about or applaud you about. And the downside of that is that a comprehensive plan, which is, could be really good, could get totally sidetracked because there's a politically-charged issue running with it. Um, and I've seen this before, and I tell you, it's a horrible thing. Because all your work gets washed down the drain because people are coming out of the woodwork to prevent you from reducing building heights. Or in another case, was actually a, a, another proj-, it was Annapolis project, it was a different thing. But it was another zoning change that would have created something different. And that became the fury and the fight, and everyone forgot about the master plan. And they voted against the master plan because the master plan was, after all, this thing. Of course, it wasn't, but that's, that's what newspapers said it was, and that's what got people out. So there's a risk when we combine two big things together that are particularly where one's potentially controversial. Um, so I just wanna share that with you, so you consider it. Uh, but if you wanted to go forward with the thirty-five foot, you know, we can certainly do that, and we could get it on the agenda, and it could run before the comprehensive plan. We could push it out faster. But it will certainly, I'd wanna give some distance between it and the public hearings on the comprehensive plan, just to make sure you can get it accomplished, um, and not ruin what's in the plan. You can imagine already, you know enough in town, who's gonna show up at the town hall to complain about reducing any building height in the town? It's gonna be anybody that lives in a house that's at thirty-five feet or bigger. Anybody who expected to develop something like that, or anybody has any commercial land, uh, who has expectations, or anybody lives in a high-density zone. Um, and then people who are advocating for affordable housing will come out to complain about it. There'll be a lot of opposition against it, so.
I would, um, so, so, all right, two questions. Affordable housing, was there an open meeting about affordable housing that I haven't seen?
I'm not aware of.
Okay, because I hear it being talked about, like it's a foregone conclusion that this is gonna be erected in our town. Um, we already have some, and we don't have a very big town. So if we're going to claim that we need more, then we need to have a meeting about it. And it, we need some input for other towns. Um.
I don't think anybody's claiming that, making that claim. But, but when you start addressing the downturn in its density, it typically brings people out who are advocates for affordable housing, the Housing Authority of Calvert County, others. And then it, just in my experience, just, I'm just letting you know.
I'm, I'm just saying, I, I hear whispers, and that needs to be addressed in town, in a public meeting if we're talking about constructing it. Um. The second thing. Right, but I'm, I'm kinda getting tired of spinning my wheels on this comprehensive plan because we keep trying to go back into the direction of high-capacity, high-intensity construction, and we never move away from it. We constantly veer back in that direction. And so I'm, I'm kind of with Cindy. Let's control this threat, and let's make a good plan that doesn't consider who's gonna get mad if they can't build as big as they want to. Because that's what we need to do to preserve small-town charm, and that's what we need to do, um, to make the residents happy and to, to make Chesapeake Beach a nice place. You let some of this stuff edge in as slowly as it may be, and you are not protecting small-town charm. You're letting developers decide what to do because they wanna make money. And they will be relentless because they want to make money. And I don't blame them for that. That's, that's what developers and people who want to make money do. But we need to protect what is good about our town, and that should be our main concern. And we can't, we can't do that.
I think one of the, one of the points that. I think one of the points that Chris is making is that homeowners will, you may find that a lot of homeowners who are voters, who control what the town council is going to be doing, are concerned about decreasing the potential value of their property. You know, wallet issues, those people. And so we're going to have to present something that they will buy or else we're going nowhere.
Right, and so what I would say to homeowners that are living in their homes, they have a vested interest in us making Chesapeake Beach a beautiful place and not letting people run them up with development. There's tons of money to be made here and values of housing and everything will just continue to go up if we do in fact preserve small-town charm. And that's what every single council person said was their priority. So if they don't like reduction in limits of height within town and they don't want to eliminate multifamily housing and they don't want to eliminate different types of housing that people are talking about bringing in, I would be interested in knowing what they do want to do to preserve small-town charm. Because what we've seen for the past year with these these buildings that have been proposed is not preserving small-town charm, especially with no design standards. And that's what we really need is we need architectural design standards and comprehensive planning, not just zoning allocations and height allocations being opened up freely for anybody who wants to exploit them.
And in the case of some of these towns that I've referred to, there are very expensive properties in St. Michael's, Laguna Beach, California. And as they keep lowering the heights, it gets more, you know, the property gets more and more valuable. So I don't think that's really necessarily how that works. But I really think if we hesitate. Now Larry, you've got a great point that we don't want to scare everybody into just saying flat out, no, we don't want to go there. We have to be very creative on how we present this in order to get it through. And I think maybe where we do start is just down in, of course, now the cart is, you know, the horse is out of the barn, they might say. Now the people know that we're even talking about height restrictions. We could see proposals coming in sooner than we ever thought because people will be rushing out to try and get in some projects that they might not have otherwise wanted to do. But I think Larry, if you just stick with the with the maritime area, which would include all the area where the ball fields are, we might be able to just, we might be able to encourage the town council to just consider that. But then we've left ourselves vulnerable to the, you know, the intensity of multi-residential, you know, dwellings that might come up after that. But I think maybe Larry, you've got a point. Maybe we should just stick with one zone.
Well, can I offer some clarification? I think bringing it down to thirty-five across the board is fine. But it's only going to really affect one zone.
It would affect two zones, right?
But the high-density zones are built out. They're totally built out. There's no land that's zoned high-density that's not already built with houses on it, maximizing the density. And I think the clearer point is if you want to make it thirty-five, what I'm just suggesting is not go into the details about, you know, not allowing parking underneath and all these other sort of more design standards because all those are context-sensitive. What works in Larry's neighborhood isn't going to work in Kathleen's neighborhood. But they're both valid and you could come up with issues. But having it at thirty-five gives everybody the flexibility they need for now. And that's what I'm saying. Deal with the big picture, like we don't want any more seventy-foot tall buildings or any more fifty-foot tall buildings. So your standard thirty-five-foot max, make it thirty-five-foot max. You don't have to say within the maritime district because why not? And then you have to address the overlay districts. There's got those weird overlay districts that are scattered about. They shouldn't be there. They should be changed, of course. It's, that's an anomaly. It's a holdover based on decisions that were made years ago. But right now, they can go high. So we want to eliminate that possibility as well. So I wouldn't limit it just to maritime district. I'd simply say thirty-five feet, that gives you flexibility. But don't get into the detailed designs things because it'll look like you're uninformed and you're imposing things on people. And everybody's got a different perspective on what they do within their thirty-five feet. What works for Larry's property is perfect. It's town, it's Chesapeake Beach style, it works. But that doesn't work in Kathleen's neighborhood on B Street. That's horrible when it happens there. But if, but we need people to understand and follow along with you and appreciate that. And that takes time. It really takes some nurturing and a lot of design pictures and a lot of, you know, it, believe me, I've been through this in really controversial places all through McArby County when we dealt with mansionization, where people were scraping off these little cottages and little houses and building these huge mansions. And when we came in with the first set of design standards that basically said that reduce the height of buildings and what people could do, people went berserk. I mean, and everything crumbled and the consensus we had crumbled. So we had to start over again and really start from the beginning. And it wasn't about standards that reduced the value in property. It were standards that made sure that new construction had a unified design aesthetic, that it made sense, that the worst parts of taller buildings were prohibited, like the side walls that are blank or when a grade drops off from a wall and all of a sudden what was thirty-five feet becomes fifty feet because the grade drops. We eliminated that. We made sure there were porches to mitigate the massing, the tall massing. And people were like, hey, this is great. So we designed, we created standards and processed and allowed houses to be built, even though bigger, so people took advantage of the market value in their land. But they were still houses and they still read as compatible architecture within that neighborhood. And that's, I think, what you want to get to and that takes time. But dealing with your, Cindy, your basic objective, which seems to be shared by at least the majority of the commission, that's right, I'll write it up and we'll get it going. And I just wanted to share with you the risk, though. That I just wanted, it was only because I think it's important that I advise you that it may be caught up in the bigger picture of what we're doing. And we'll just have to be sensitive about how we proceed with that set of zoning amendments while we're doing the comprehensive plan. It's just, we have to be thoughtful.
And I'd suggest that we ask Chris to write up a proposal that he thinks represents the discussion this evening and that has a chance of passing without impeding the progress of the comprehensive plan. And have him come back to us with some ideas, not, doesn't have to be written up as zoning codes, but some proposals on what you think Chris would work in this environment.
Okay.
Any thoughts on that?
I think that's a good idea to capture the conversation. But then, you know, there's the other option of just, you know, asking for a temporary moratorium so we can work out every single zone and put the proper, you know, specifications on each zone individually.
I guess that's an idea, a temporary moratorium throughout the town. I don't know, Chris, what? But if you'll take those ideas and we'll talk about them at our, I don't know, I don't want to take up time from our work session, which comes next on the comprehensive plan. But wait, maybe December fifteenth, we'll revisit this. Is that all right?
Yes, and is the fifteenth the regular meeting, it's not the work session?
Right, yes. Yeah, December second's the work session.
That's right. Okay, I just want to say that because it's likely that you're going to get an application for a development project on the fifteenth. And what it's going to be is a proposal to revise the Rodden Real Hotel Resort Building. To kind of change the pieces a little bit, redesign it. They've had some issues. And I thought it was important that it be brought to the planning commission because it's going to affect the overall design. It's not affecting the mass of the building in any way. Actually, the architecture is better, they hired a new architect. But that's, they met with us a week ago, I guess, a week and a half ago. And they're trying to get ready to come to the planning commission meeting. And if they submit something in time, we're kind of obligated to get them on the agenda.
Right, well, Chris.
Half of the meeting on the fifteenth was, Commissioner Green Gold had talked about sign standards or something.
Actually, it was community identity. It was really the community identity, which is part of what actually Lori's talking about. It's really one big category. But if we can get, unfortunately, this comprehensive plan is so, we need to get that finished. So I hate to add too many more things. The building height, I really felt was critical that we start working on that. The community identity theme, which then the signage would come under and then the architectural details would come under. All of that stuff comes under once you get a theme. But I don't know if we have time with all this other going now. So I'm a little concerned, we may have to wait till January. And then we've got, I know, the Airbnb thing in January. So it's your pleasure, it's whatever your pleasure is. We can certainly bring up another agenda item. But I think Chris is getting overwhelmed with what we've got going on right now.
Chris, I have a question about the project that you're mentioning. What makes it a revision?
Whenever you're proposing to change something that's substantial, like in this case, the massing of the building, you'll see what they're proposing to do is move the taller part of the building further above the Rodden Real Restaurant. So it's actually the three, I think it's three stories above that ground-level retail type of thing, is being pushed further towards the water and leaving more space open between the building and that parking garage type of thing. As it works out, actually puts the building further away from the residential people on the other side of the fishing creek. But there are other implications of it. But that's the type of thing. And as a result, you know that pavilion that was proposed between the old hotel? So they're redesigning that and they're probably going to be introducing another room or two through that area that connects both of the, I'm not sure if it connects both the hotels or not. I'm not entirely clear on that yet because I haven't had something to review. But it's those types of changes.
Chris, the Harbor Vista South, you said it was, is that the project?
No, this is, this is the Rodden Real Resort, the hotel project that's under development.
This is the hotel on the other side. It's not in the valet parking lot spot, is that correct?
It's, it's the, do you know where the Rodden Real Restaurant is?
Yeah.
Okay, it's that building. It's what's being proposed, what has been approved to be built around it and above it. It's changing the pieces, changing the blocks around. But it's just that space, that building, nothing else, no other.
That is a hotel, right?
Yes.
No, there's the restaurant and then there's the hotel next to it. And this, if you go to the parking lot there at the Rodden Real, you'll see there's some areas that have been kind of reserved for construction. You can see partial construction has started. I think that's what Chris is referring to.
No, so I heard, I thought you were talking about the other side of the road. So you're talking about the hotel in the Rodden Real, not the condo project that has been proposed years back and should be expired.
It is expired. And yes, I'm only talking about the hotel project that is already approved and has been being developed under approved permits. Want to change it?
Okay.
You can't change it unless you go to the public and have a meeting, let the planning commission weigh in on it.
Yep, okay, I was just making sure.
I would like to ask if they're going to, if we're going to have a meeting about the, this, if it requires a meeting, we need some advance notice so we can publicize that and give adequate public notice so that the public can participate. So, you know, I would say if we're going to deal with it, listen to it on December fifteenth. We need no later than the first part of, the first, December first, to know what it is so we can publish and publicize that.
Right. I agree with that and that's how we're proceeding. And that's actually what I told them. We need it first of December so that I have time to review it. I could get the plans out to you and we could post it online, so. You know, Paul Woodburn, who used to be the town manager, he's now representing, oh, he's always represented Rodden Real. So it was him and the attorney for the Rodden Real are the ones who called me to have this meeting. And it looks like they're pretty far along in their architects' work. So I would expect something very soon. I don't think they'll wait till the last minute.
So that would be on the fifteenth. And we also do have to do the comprehensive plan on the fifteenth as well. So I'm a little concerned that if I introduce another agenda item, we will be overwhelmed. Don't you think, Chris?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm thinking too.
And I'm thinking that identity thing, community identity, is something we need to address in the plan itself. So I don't want to kick it down the road. But I think we're not going to be able to address it to the level that you ultimately want to do it. I think in the plan, we have to say, we can use photographs, we can use language. We can say, this is essentially our identity. We'd like to develop standards to make sure that new development implements it. And we'd like to do a study that gets into this in a little more detail. And then maybe in the spring or next summer, we really dig down deep, maybe hire an expert in architecture and design to assemble design standards to achieve this. That are really like nice graphics. I mean, there's a ton of approaches you can take.
The one thing that I was, I should have brought up is that we should have had that beach community, that beach elementary school sign be part of our new sign program. We should wait to have that as part of that. But anyway, that's a whole nother issue. So, okay, so then you want to wait until January for that? Or when do you think the time would be good for?
Yeah, I don't think we, I don't think we could talk about it in December.
I don't think we can.
I don't think even if we did, it wouldn't really register. We wouldn't be able to make use of what we learned in the discussion.
Okay.
All right, well, December second is a work session on the comprehensive plan. Provided, Chris, you're going to get us some more to digest, right? How's that coming?
Right around Thanksgiving. It's coming along. So I think I said, either at Thanksgiving or the weekend, the twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth or something like that, we said, so you have plenty of time before the second to review it. So yeah, I'm moving right along with it. It's a land use transportation. But I'm going to throw in the environmental section too. We're going to have plenty of the review for both two, both next two meetings.
Okay. And the December fifteenth meeting will be possibly a Rodden Real presentation and then the rest of the meeting will be comprehensive plan workshop.
Right.
And then January is Airbnb or short-term rentals. And then what's left of that meeting, we'll try and do some more comprehensive plan or town identity kinds of issues.
Okay.
Okay, you have agreement? All right, um, looks like all of our.
Time out, time out, time out, sorry. You gave me direction to come up with something on the building height issue. So that's gonna be part of the December second meeting or December fifteenth meeting?
December fifteenth.
Okay, thank you.
We need, yeah.
That'll give you plenty of time to write it up, Chris, with all your other homework.
We need two curses.
We need two curses, exactly, exactly.
All right, and, uh, looks like all of our public is checked off, so, um, there's no public comment. Uh, does anyone else have anything they wanna bring up? Hearing nothing, uh, do I, I make a motion that we adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Third.
Anyone oppose?
Jonathan wants to go to bed.
Okay, no opposition, thank you very much. And we'll, uh, we'll see you again on the second of December.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving. You too, Kathleen, thanks a lot, bye-bye.